Good afternoon, everybody. It's now six o'clock, September 16th, 2024. We're going to pause meeting order. We have everybody here tonight, so we have a forum. Let's go ahead and say the pledge. All right.
Go fix it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So looking at the regular agenda, has everybody had a chance to see the agenda tonight? Okay, I'll look for approval of the...
I do have one moment. I just, I do, I don't know what my other council members think, but I have a bit of concern about what may end up being the length of the meeting. I'm wondering if we should look at tabling item number 13 for, just simply due to time tonight. I don't know what the rest of you think.
I mean, we were here pretty late at the last meeting, so I mean, I'm fine with it.
Fine tabling it, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
I'll make a motion to table item 13 on the regular agenda.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Push 13 to next meeting. Next is the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to go through the consent agenda?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Not for me.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Number five, approve the corrected city council meeting minutes from August 19th. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from August 19th?
Yes.
Okay. Any corrections yet, or are we good?
I'll make a motion to approve the corrected city council meeting minutes of August 19th, 2024.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second, please.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, approve the council meeting minutes from September 3rd. Okay, anybody have any questions on the minutes from September 3rd? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September 3rd.
I got a motion, I got a second.
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Public comment. Does anybody got anything they want to talk about tonight?
Yep.
Come up there and have a seat. Give us your name and your address, please.
And just to let you guys know, I am on call, so if my phone rings, I'm not here.
Okay.
So I, I'm here...
Nope. Name and address, please.
Brandon Ott, 7717 Firefly Lane.
Okay.
And I'm here because I, actually, I want to know why I'm here. For doing something that's perfectly legal, but yet I am kind of at this point feeling harassed right now. Just due to having a vehicle parked on a street. Moves quite often, but it doesn't move, I guess, at the same time everyone else moves around here today. Doesn't move to leaving. But, yeah, that's the overall...
What is this in relation to specifically?
Well, I got some neighbors that aren't... Basically, what I think it's coming down to is it's not a pretty vehicle.
This is, it reached out to me about the parking ordinance on the half sack. So this is the, the half cul-de-sac. Somebody who's opposed to the ordinance on the half sack parking restrictions.
The one where you guys wanted to, or Breton proposed maybe, I think it was Breton, but no parking within 100 feet of a half sack, whatever half sack is.
That's a citywide ordinance? You said you feel like you are being harassed? Was there a complaint or something?
Yeah, there's been tons. I asked for a bunch of information today, and I couldn't get any of it because it's going to take a couple days. And until this got tabled, it was almost, until I brought it up to a council member, it was going to be done and passed and...
So, Sarah, he feels like the parking, this part of the parking ordinance is about people disliking his personal vehicle on the streets, and so him, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when it was brought to council, your name wasn't mentioned.
No, but I mean, I'm sure...
And, and I will say that there was a nice graphic that the group Interstate Engineering brought up, expressing concerns throughout the city, not just necessarily in your neighborhood, about getting buses and trucks around half sacks and the associated parking that would be on half sacks. Now, I will say this is only for half sack construction, not full cul-de-sac construction, okay? And the reasoning for that, Jim, refresh my memory, was because there's a compromised turn radius?
Well, we were asked to look into the half sack parking requirements in conjunction with the parking ordinance update, I guess you want to call it. So that was what we had prepared, and that's the animation that we showed you a couple times. It was a vehicle in there and making the turning movements with trucks and opposing traffic. So that's where this came to be. As far as the location, I just did what I was told about half sacks.
And you said you live on Firefly?
Correct. Yep, and I live in wherever the half sack is. I tried looking up to see where a half sack is. Everything relates to a football game, you know? That's why I think that's a half sack. So I think it's kind of a made up term. But anyway, I had to deal with a neighbor. You know, they, they called a complaint in, they got a sheriff out there, sheriff gave me a warning, which, you know, whatever. But I mean, it just kind of got snowballing effect from there.
They didn't like that you parked on the road?
Well, I mean, I was parked, I guess, in front of two other houses with my work truck, okay? After that little...
Do you have a driveway?
I sure do.
Do you park in your driveway?
My work truck's in there now.
You have a work truck in your driveway? What other names is...
Yeah, I got a work truck that sits in my driveway now. I adhere to what the neighbors got. Called the cops, and I said, I'll, from now on, park in the driveway. Or in front of my driveway, because I'm not going to constantly move a vehicle all day long. Then my kids want to come home for 10 minutes, shoe hoops, run away, so I got to run back out, pull my vehicle back in. I'm not doing that. But I adhere to what they asked, but I've heard rumors now that there's been a petition going around to get this parking done, you know, X from cul-de-sacks or half sacks, I guess. And then talking with a neighbor yesterday, they feel that my vehicle, and you're Sarah?
I am.
I think you mentioned back in 71 or something in the video that we can't have crappy looking vehicles around. I didn't know moving to Horace, North Dakota, I had to have a specific year, and...
I, I don't actually recall ever saying that we can't have crappy vehicles around. I will tell you that the...
Upgas falling off and this and, you know, all sorts of stuff. But that pickup, I assure you, is in working order, it's got current cabs on it, got insurance or liability, I guess.
I'm sure that wasn't in relation to this discussion, because this discussion just came up in the last two meetings.
Well, there was a deal Breton brought up in 71 at the end of the video about if you guys should mirror Westport's 72-hour window of overnight parking. I'm fine with you guys, if you want to do 72-hour parking, do it. I'm just not okay with this 100-foot within a half sack. And then these other neighbors that are for it, I mean, I don't know why they want to eliminate parking in front of their house. I mean, if they want company over, why, I mean, why do they want to do that to themselves?
Does your vehicle fit in the grassy area between driveways and a half sack?
My truck sits under the streetlight. And it's nowhere near, I offered Breton to drag him, I took up to show him how easy you can get around that road. I'm outside my house every night, me and the kids, whatever, till dark. Lots of people come by way faster than 25 miles an hour. A lot of people are nose deep in their phone, or they're attracted to what I'm doing in my yard, because what that is about, I don't know. But they're focused on me all the time. A lot of people will cut the corner and drive against the traffic for, you know, a good half of another block before they gear back over.
Cut, hold on, hold on. Cut the corner and drive against the traffic. Jim, do you have that graphic still?
I don't. I do, I, no. But there's, that's the intersection right there.
So...
There's your truck.
There's my truck. Look how far away from the intersection it is. It's parked, that's where it is all the time.
I'm not sure where you're referencing.
Lost River.
Okay. So, so what the illustration showed us, and this is a council decision, this isn't me personally or anyone one person. This ultimately came up because there had been a number of complaints from, I believe, Amazon drivers, if I'm not mistaken, about trying to get through these half sack cul-de-sacks. And when there's vehicles parked on the half sack, they do exactly what you just said, which is they cut the corner short and they come barreling down in front of oncoming traffic.
But they shouldn't be barreling down.
Well, whether you're doing 25 miles an hour or 15 miles an hour, any individual can perceive it as such. And so having a vehicle in that, what I'll call it, in the lane of traffic is what the issue that was presented to the city council, stating that if there's a vehicle parked there or within that particular location as you come around the corner on either side, that it makes it extremely difficult for drivers, whether it be trucks, vehicles, whatever else, to get around that curve, and it could pose a danger for pedestrians, potential for damage for vehicles, potential for damage for trucks, and children that could be at play in your vicinity because you're in an oncoming lane of traffic.
I'm in an oncoming lane?
No, the truck is. To get around the parked vehicle there...
I mean, not often, I mean, when you're referring to trucks, are you referring to tractor trailers, someone's?
I'm referring to any motorized vehicle larger than a standard car that comes into that development, whether it be a UPS box truck, an Amazon truck, a tractor trailer. Could be a contractor vehicle, a large pickup pulling the truck.
I watched with the neighbors that complained, I watched the one day, and I'm sure he got disgusted, because I would have too, but... I wouldn't use them guys as the best drivers, because that Amazon guy, he delivered a package to my neighbor right to the north, and before he got in there, I don't know what he was doing, but he backed through the next neighbor's boulevard. Like, how the heck do you do that? I mean, I wouldn't base it off of an, I wouldn't make this decision off of an Amazon driver. But my point is, that pickup parked right there, the way it is, it's almost right on the grass. All right? Before I came here today, I went out one foot from the outside driver's side tires, and I walked off to where the asphalt and concrete are. There's at least 20 feet right there. Normal pickup, two mirrors, you're eight feet wide. So you got four feet of leeway, you know, eight and eight, the two of them pass. And how does that, how can, how can you not pass each other at that amount of width?
I don't know. As a council, it's up to us to make a decision what's in the best interest of the city for safety and convenience. And 100 feet is not that big.
No, it's not.
You know? So, so does it make sense to have continued traffic parking within that turn radius? Or does it make sense to simply have a blanket wide ordinance? Frankly, by your own saying here today, that people cut the corner short, they have to come into oncoming traffic, these truck drivers can't seem to drive forward or backwards, they back into people's boulevards in a half sack? I mean, based on what you're telling me, all due respect, it makes sense to have something like this in place.
I, I don't think so.
So, so if the school bus goes through that corner, what happens?
Nothing, it goes by there just fine.
You're telling me the school bus doesn't have to go into oncoming traffic? You being honest with me now?
I've never saw school buses meet in oncoming, I've always seen it go right through there. But in all realistic, it's a residential area. I mean, if someone's coming at you, are you just going to keep driving at them? I mean, usually people have common courtesy to stop for one another.
Totally agree. I've driven through that area many times, maybe not exactly Firefly right there, but when there's, let's just say, a party going on, family get together, whatever, and there's parking on both sides of the street, literally, it's one lane of traffic. You are, you have to wait for cars heading if, if both sides have parking on. So whether this is the actual end of our parking ordinance or whether it has to go further as far as blocking parking completely on one side of the street or other, the city's going to have to do something.
Yeah.
Because at some point in the winter, obviously, this is going to get worse.
And my pickup does not sit there in winter.
Okay. I'll take your word for it, I don't know.
It, it sits right up in my, in my garage.
So which house was yours on that other graphic? Was it the one on the left of it, or...
The one that the pickup's sitting right in front of.
Is there a reason that you don't use your own, which, which house is yours?
The one that the pickup's sitting on, with all the rock.
With all the rock?
Yep.
You have a, a very nice sized driveway. Is there a reason you don't park your vehicles in your own driveway?
I don't have to. That, that's my, I don't have to park it. I can legally park on the road, so that's why I park this.
Okay. I'm just asking if there's a reason.
I mean, it's, I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm a jerk or anything, but I just feel like this is a simple neighborhood thing that could have been resolved, like going to the sheriffs and then going to here and then... When I found in some videos, there's very little talk, and then here it was almost going to get past until I got tabled. And then not even hearing my side of it. I mean, I've been out here since December of 18, and until now, it's a problem all of a sudden? Well, I would agree that part of the problem would be that could have been some foreplanting of Wall Avenue. I mean, why only have a goal to get to one entrance for that big of a development and have one way out, you know?
There's, there's two.
Not during the construction, I love it. When they expect...
And you know, I just want you to know, sir, in full disclosure, when this was presented to us, it was not presented to us as like this specific issue. It was presented to us as half sacks.
Citywide.
In general. I mean, I don't want you to think that there was a discussion somehow about this specific...
Well, it just kind of seems like it was.
I mean, I see that the animation is here, I do recognize that, but it wasn't really presented to us as like this issue.
Because what little bits and pieces I'm hearing from different neighbors, and then I try to call out different ones, like, what's going on here? It just feels like, you know, it's just a big targeting issue.
Have you had a discussion with those neighbors in person?
When I have discussions with, for example, one of them, they threaten to call the sheriff on here. Mr. Quan's back here, and he can attest to that. He came out twice in a week.
I think I'd, I think I'd like to hear from both parts.
Yeah. That is why I brought this, that's why I wanted to revisit this, is because I did want you, I wanted to hear from both sides.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Does city council still have to do a second reading on the ordinance anyway? Do you want to just discuss it?
We're, we're going, we've, we've heard it now, we, we still have another meeting. Obviously, it's not going to happen.
Everything that I have here, because I don't know what more is going to happen from when I leave here, but... I mean, I did some measurements where I feel the road would continue on if we didn't have that knuckle or half sack, I guess.
So you have some information you want to give to us? Is that, can you, can I have you actually hand it to Lucas or to the head table? Or you don't have a copy?
Well, I just got exactly what I, I mean, I didn't know I was going to have to make many copies, but... I mean, for example, if you would zoom down to the next curb, is there any issues with driving down there? There's cars that are parked there once in a while. Is there any cars passing each other right there?
Probably. And like I said earlier, when, with, this is, this is probably the, the, the starting point of us looking at further parking restrictions on the city, because we have a lot of city streets that are a lot, probably too narrow for proper snow removal, okay? And that's always been my big thing, you can go back, I don't know, how many names you want, watch. So are we trying to target specifically you? No. It's a starting point to try to figure out how do we solve our parking issue? And I, I'm not saying I don't want to listen to your, I do want to listen to your stuff, but also I need to move a meeting along, so we're not here till midnight again. Last meeting, we held till what, 11:00?
Well, I was trying to figure out if I should come or not.
Oh, I still want you to come, don't get me wrong.
On the agenda today.
But I also, I, I want you to hand us what...
Well, I think when I'm done, I can...
You can always make copies of it and drop it off at the city hall.
Take a picture, email.
Seems kind of great, you know? I came in today asking for stuff, and I can't get it, but I should be able to hold off too.
What were you specifically requesting?
Well, I just want, I've heard that there's been email complaints coming in. I mean, I just want to see some of that stuff.
I spoke with Mr. Ott this afternoon, and indicated it'll take us a day or two to be able to touch base with their staff. We have some staff out, so I need to check with them to see if they've got any email complaints.
Oh, just verify.
He was asking for a copy of the complaints he received. A lot of times when people complain about parking issues, it's normally a phone call or in person when they've seen, like, they either see like our public work staff, the deputies. So it does take a little bit of time to be able to touch base and go, okay, who has received any complaints like this?
Do you have any ideas?
Specific to this location.
Roughly, how many complaints have come here?
I know I've...
Specific to this location?
I know I've received a handful verbal ones, and I've received a few written. So I, you're probably in the, email-wise, just a couple. That's been more recent, that's been stepped up to the email side of things. Verbal, on and off, over the last couple of years, we've had just like one-offs here or there, different ones like that.
I know we've had some other parts of the city that have received some...
As for, as for half sack conversation, it was approached in general because we have half sacks across the community. And if you have this one issue here, you may have it in other areas. And also, where you have maybe some smaller lots or anything on a half sack, driveways are closer together where you can't legally park. And there's portions on the half sacks, like even this one, where it's not legal to even park on. So it was going, okay, what makes sense? And it was included in that ordinance, draft ordinance, because when we asked Jim to go through, is there enough room to make a turn? What are the complications? When you have a vehicle, like a bus or a vehicle with trailers or anything like that, that turn movement gets more difficult, and that's where we saw the conflict point. So that's why it was brought to the council as a whole. As for, or the discussion here tonight, it was concerns, you know, Mr. Ott had it from one perspective in regards to this issue.
Wait, I understand that perspective.
And then there's some that may have some concerns from the other perspective.
Right.
But it's not, it's not on the agenda for the ordinance as a whole, just to understand why it's not on the agenda. Lucas and I are discussing the 72-hour parking and the enforceability of it, and he had some concerns there we're looking into. And then meeting with the deputies last week, they expressed concerns about like campers or trailers being parked on the street for extended periods of time, not hooked up to vehicles or anything. So we're looking into that, and I will be...
Related to that, too.
So I will be working with Lucas and one of the deputies of addressing that of, is there any other things that we could be looking at on that ordinance and have the discussion overall from council?
I wonder, I wonder if we shouldn't wait maybe then until it's on the agenda next to have this conversation, because I would want to make sure it's, it's noticed, so everybody can come and speak. I have some questions too, but I'm going to reserve them, I think, until it's on the agenda.
Well, okay. I, I'm, I could go that way too. I just was thinking that since other cities do not have anything about half sacks, and it seems like there's a pinch point on this one in Horace, but nothing about any others, I thought this could be an isolated situation. And how the road is curved, residents have reached out to talk to me about how this one, and somebody is here. So I, I do think it's worth listening to possibly this section being its own situation because I don't know that it's exactly like every half sack, and so I don't know if it falls.
Well, and that's, that's what we're trying to get to, because when this was brought to us, this particular situation wasn't brought to us initially. And I, I can only imagine your frustration, because here you are, you live in a beautiful home in a beautiful neighborhood, and it is a gorgeous neighborhood down there. And you've got, you've got some, you've got some folks that are a little frustrated, right? And, and at this point in time, you're, you're feeling like, well, damn it, why can't I park my truck there? Right? So, so we're kind of pushing the envelope.
Especially when two different sheriffs come out at two totally different times and say that I'm per, was it North Dakota Centric Order, I'm well, like, the truck regulatory? He measured, and he's like, two vehicles can easily pass your truck right now. And I said, are they doing it as you sit there? Yep. So, so we got two sheriffs saying I'm doing nothing wrong with my pickup there. So I, I just don't see why it needs to really go any farther.
The other thing is that if this parking ordinance in general takes a little bit to iron out, but there's a frustrating section of the neighborhood, that's the other reason why I do think we should hear the opposing viewpoint to see if this situation can be remedied.
Right. That won't be tonight, though.
Okay.
So for tonight, I ask that you please take a picture of your information, send it to the council, so at least, at least one of us gets it, and then Breton can distribute it.
Yep.
And we appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts.
No, it's just, I really didn't want to come in, because I really think it's foolish that it's getting to this point. Something that should have been easily resolved between neighbors.
And you've spoken to your neighbors, and you've still not been able to come to a resolution?
No, it's like I said, I tried to be the bigger man one time and say, hey, this is what's going on. This is what I found out from the sheriff. I got threatened to get the cops called on again, and I'm like, we can't keep doing this. And then I talked with another neighbor, and her argument is, is my pickup is too ugly.
I mean, unfortunately, we can't be the mediators.
We start to bump into, and then we can buy my daughter a vehicle. I mean, she might start out driving this pickup. But if it's too ugly, I mean, I'm more than willing to you guys to buy me a car for better.
Is there, is there another spot that might be more conducive to park this vehicle so that it's not creating an issue with your neighbors?
Well, I mean, honestly, I believe right now this is really a non-issue, because the, the, we haven't passed the ordinance. We are not mediators to this gentleman with his neighbors. I think he really needs to visit with his neighbors. When we have the discussion with the ordinance itself, I think that's when we either enforce the ordinance or we don't. So I think we can't be the mediator, I'm sorry, Mr. Ott.
That's the thing, they won't, no one talks to me than everybody. I don't know why. I, I like to talk, but no one else does. So, yeah, and like I said, I'm for the 72-hour, you can do that, but I think this...
Because like right now, he's not breaking any laws. We don't have the ordinance in place, so he can park there right now if he chooses. We cannot be the mediators, you guys, between him and his neighbors at this point. If the ordinance was to pass, then I think there would be a conversation where he would be breaking the ordinance, but at this point, he's not really done anything wrong, so...
No.
I think we should probably let them figure out their issues, and then we discuss the ordinance when it comes to us, is my opinion.
Fair enough.
Thanks for sending that to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I haven't sent it yet, but I'll get you this stuff, and, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ott.
All right. Anyone else?
Public comment.
Public comment. Go ahead. What's your name and what's your address, sir?
Sean Carlson, 8844 Norman Rice Avenue. Appreciate the council's time, I'll try to be quick.
I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Sean, S-H-A-W-N, Carlson.
Thank you.
Looking for a couple of questions. Is there like a status update to the pond, the sidewalk, reparation, whatever's going to happen to that in, in Lost River there? The stat, is there a...
So taking the information from the last time we presented to city council, and hearing after that meeting that there was more of a desire to keep the sidewalk than what was originally proposed, city staff and myself, we've been working to come up with options to save the path in some way, shape, or form. And the last direction of the city council was to come back with, with pricing, like estimates on that. And we just narrowed down last week kind of what the feasible options were, weighing the geotechnical report and what we have been hearing from the residents through, I think, some Facebook, I think originally maybe they've put some of that stuff on to us, and it's talked about at city council meetings and that. So it's trying to bring some, we're trying to bring a project back. We're, we're a little bit closer. If you go to my whiteboard, I got nice drawings and stuff on there. We're, we're a little bit closer. If you go to my whiteboard, I got nice drawings and stuff on there of our doodle, of our doodlings and stuff. Usually I take a picture in case I erase it, but just to kinda get an idea of what actually the, the different options are gonna be since there was, it was met with some opposition in the beginning to just take it out and flatten out the slopes, that type, so.
Sure. And then I guess a follow-up question, I'll try to be quick, but is there gonna be, no matter what's done or independent of the reparations, is there any plan to keep, to, to get, to keep the, to keep the pond cleaner? Like those cattails, if you look at it now, it's cringe-worthy.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It's really decreased and it's like, it's an eyesore, it's embarrassing.
So, that pond is one of the few that has rock riprap on it, and the rock riprap potentially makes it a little bit harder to mow that down and to kinda maintain that. So the city's gone with, it's called a fleximat, which has just got rock embedded in a, like a cable to hold the shoreline in place, and then you can still mow it. So we, that's one of the things we had talked about, was taking that riprap completely out and just having it be a mobile surface all the way down to the, down to the water level. Uh, the other thing we talked about doing was deepening it if we could. It seems like the deeper the ponds we have, the better the water quality in them. And two is maybe potentially taking out that curve on the, on the east side to increase the volume of water in there, to try to get it so that there's more water for water quality that way. So that's part of what we had talked about. The pond and the, they're together, but they're kinda independent, so it's a matter of how we bring it back to the council to, to address both of those concerns.
Sure.
But we also need the pumps, right?
The what?
The fountains. Or what, the fountains or whatever that's circulating the water for the water.
Well, they don't circulate it very well. That's one of the problems that we had. So I had, I had Adam put together some stuff already. They have eighteen total fountains. Six of them don't work. One of them has broken light, but the pump works. One has a bad cord. Six are not installed. One of them was not installed due to a failing slope, not fixed, not installed, but fixed twice before. Two not working, lights don't work. The various things, because I had asked him to follow up from our last meeting, like, what is wrong with them? And I got
Citywide.
A laundry list of things. Citywide, yes. I got kind of a laundry list of, of things, from, ranging from an electrical cord to a motor, to pulling in weeds and drawing more amps than they can handle and burning the motor out. That's one of the things that they think has been happening too. So it isn't this quick fix where we know that it's the, whatever the fountain is, this model doesn't work. It, it apparently is, runs there. There's quite a few things here as to what's wrong with them, so.
Jim, do you think we would see the options at the next City Council meeting?
I'm gonna try. We got two weeks in between the next one.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, three weeks. We have three weeks with an additional Monday here, so that was my goal, was to try to get that, get something back to you guys by then.
Good.
I guess as a resident, I'm, it's refreshing to hear that we're getting closer. I realize it takes time and Lord knows, everything is expensive and, and it has to be going down the right channels. If in the future, it can also be considered to really keep that pond clean. It's, it's, it's an eyesore. We've got a beautiful sidewalk around it. The sidewalk is lit. It's, it's grat, it's mowed around it. Um, there's irrigation around it. It's like, it's meant to be walked around and viewed and looked at and and it's, uh, it's really gone down in glory. And I get it because all the recent happenings in the past, but if we could pay some attention to that, that would really be great, so.
Managing expectation in reality of a pond like that is something that public works is kind of struggling with now. That was the first one that was done. And just learning from that one, unfortunately, you're kind of a victim of that, learning some of that.
And I get it, and I know there's no magic wand, just go, hey, fix it, and then, I mean, it, it costs a lot of money and all that, but it's like, really, the way it is now, it's almost unacceptable. I mean, from, from a reasonable person's viewpoint, I challenge anybody to go look at it. I'm not here raving mad lunatic upset, but it's like, it's kinda cringe-worthy.
Yes.
I saw it too.
Yeah. And, and, and there's the, the same sentiment to share around the development, so appreciate you guys and, uh, any attention to it would be appreciated, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they wanna talk about? The front table. Say your name and address, sir.
My name is Phil Nelson. I live, uh, seven, seven zero nine Firefly Lane. I'll keep this very brief. As you said, you don't want to discuss this any further. I live on the Firefly Half-Sack. I believe it's a concern that is unique to all half sacks in Horace, simply by its construction and by other situations. I would love to discuss this further. I can't speak to every half sack, cause I don't live on every half sack. Truly, it is, uh, as the graphic showed, a concern about parking. Doesn't matter what vehicle parks there, make, model, size, it is constricting a road that is already narrow. The Firefly Lane Half-Sack is ten feet narrower than any other half sack in Lost River. It's the only half sack that has a S curve that leads into it. If you noticed on the map, west slash southbound traffic is already artificially placed in the opposing lane, simply by the way, uh, the road jogs.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, it is approximately ten feet narrower than the other half sacks in the development, including the half sack that the graphic was made of.
You can see.
Go back, go back to the graphic without the property detail, just the lines?
The animation is the one.
Take the houses off. Yeah. Oh, there you go. So, okay, so we're looking at the left one. That's Goldfinch, and then we have Straightaway, and then we have Firefly.
Yep.
Yeah.
With a jog. Okay, so there is a jog going up to that.
So if you imagine westbound slash southbound traffic, as they're approaching that jog, are not truly following the path and already, uh, as, as the other concerned neighbor said, they're in opposing traffic. It's already forcing them that way. But like I said, if we don't wanna talk about this right now, I'm happy to stop my comment.
No, I just, I, I wanna be very clear that this is citywide, not just one specific.
And as I said, I can only speak to this half sack. It's the only one I live on.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson.
Does anybody else got anything they wanna talk about? One once, twice. All right. I'll have our sheriff support. Good afternoon. All right, so I'm not sure if we got the monthly report for August over to you guys or not. Paul, do you know if we did?
I don't have it.
Nobody got it?
I did not see it.
Okay, okay. There was a little bit of, our administrative assistant got a little bit busy, cause the other one was on vacation, so. Um, but the first thing I'm going to address is, uh, I'm gonna notify the city that there is a new sex offender in town. The address is six eight three one, sixty-seven Street South in Horace. Uh, name is Brent Joseph Sexton. He is twenty-nine years old. He has blue eyes, blonde hair. He's five foot eleven and weighs about two hundred and twenty pounds. Um, his registration level right now is unassessed, so when it is unassessed, um, it just means that he's just been recently charged with this and they're still in the process of classifying him. Um, until that happens, um, he's considered a low level, but that could possibly go up depending on. And his offenses are one count of possession of materials prohibited. And that was in twenty twenty-four. And I'm not sure if the city got an email from the sheriff's office with his picture or not, but that can be, that can be forwarded to you.
And then you guys put that on your, like, social media pages, like?
Um, I believe, um, I'm not exactly sure if it is or not.
I believe it depends on the level.
Yeah.
For, once they have that classify, or classification given, that determines the notifications that they go through.
Yeah. So like I said, he's considered a low level until he's assessed, um, but.
That house appears to be in South Dale Farms, on the northeast corner?
Correct. Yep. Yep. He's on a corner house. All right. Uh, I will bring us through with the monthly report. I guess I'll just talk about it. There's no fun animations for us.
I'm sorry, can I ask you just a quick question?
Correct, yeah.
Are we, like, legally obligated to, like, put that on our Facebook or social media or anything?
Um, so that is a good question. I do not believe so. Um, that would be a question for our sergeant that takes care of all this.
Okay.
Um, I will ask him and I will get back to the city with that. I don't believe so. If it was, we definitely would've made the point to let you guys know and to have that out.
So, re- really quick, I would just say, I have my Sheriff Johnner in there, uh, detective that is in charge of, um, this issue or this topic of sex offender registration, things like that. Uh, we have, what do we do? Have a presentation to council or not, but, uh, if council wants one, we could pursue that, but for the time being, right now, we go off into the county's notification process, processes, since we contract with them for law enforcement. In a, that notifications that is required at the state level or for that, they handle it for the city. So, since they are the law enforcement agency for the city, that's part of it.
Okay, so like, if we had our own police department?
Then we would deal with it.
Hmm, gotcha.
Yep. But they have different levels of, for sex offender, of when they have different levels of notification and, uh, items like that, so. Uh, they wanna make sure that they follow their process and they're consistent with it, uh, because it's a very sensitive topic.
Are there restrictions of where a sex offender can live in relation to schools and things?
Depending on their risk level. Yep. So like I said, it's, this is, this came out on Friday, I believe it was Friday afternoon. Um, so obviously the weekend, nothing really gets done during the weekend. Um, so today I've not gotten, gotten any more updates on this, so I believe it's still unassessed, his risk level. So as soon as it is, um, that could be something that we can bring back up with the city and let you guys know what his risk level turned out to be. All right. So for August, we have four hundred and twenty-two calls for service in the city of Horace. A majority of the calls, sixty of them, were building and residence checks, uh, us checking doors, um, making contacts with people, going into businesses, talking with people. If it's at night, we just go and check the doors and make sure everything's secure. Um, twenty-two civil papers or civil complaints as well. Um, there's twenty-two, uh, correction, there's fifteen traffic complaints. There's with traffic complaints that there's a lot that goes into traffic complaints for sheriff's office, such as doing direct patrols and stuff such as that. I know that was something that was brought up to Deputy Noonan about getting more numbers for you guys to look at for our directed patrols. I think that's, um, it just needs, just needs to get compiled and put into information, and we will have that for you the next meeting. We have fourteen medical assists, fourteen parking complaints, um, thirteen animal calls, thirteen field contacts, eleven public assist. Um, and the most other stuff was, um, reckless driving calls. Um, obviously, traffic is still, continues to be an issue as it always is in town. Um, so our case offenses, the highest case, cases were, um, possession of marijuana, some drug offenses, um, and then a couple minors were also issued. That was in the month of August. Um, so our hotspots are obviously Seventy-sixth Avenue and Canal Seventeen again, looks like way around, around about. I believe that would probably be results from traffic stops. Um, a lot of traffic stops get, are conducted in that area due to obviously high influx of traffic. Um, and then it looks like the hotspot would be, um, down next to the fire hall. I would take that as obviously influx of traffic comes through here like crazy, um, especially with road construction that was going on. And that is pretty much what I have for August. Um, I just wanted to ask, on Bean Days, that was something that I kinda wanna bring up as well. If the council had any suggestions for sheriff's office, if, if they thought things went okay, if things didn't go okay, if there was any suggestions for sheriff's office specifically for next year, things that we could work on.
I didn't hear of any issues.
I heard you got your exercise.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
It was, it was.
Is that one?
Chasing after.
Chasing.
People.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I got my window kicked out of my new patrol vehicle, so that was fun.
You did? Yeah, I read that and I knew it was.
Did you get it repaired yet?
Not yet. Not yet. Five hundred miles on it.
Mirror's coming, just you know.
Yeah, right.
Um, uh, I do appreciate the presence you guys had down here for Bean Days. Uh, I realize, uh, two of our regulars were not, uh, working Bean Days. So that'll be hopefully a scheduling thing. Um, and, uh, the, the deputies that were here, I do appreciate their help. Uh, I get a chance to talk to, I think, every single one of them. Um, and I, I do appreciate their help. I think, uh, Mr. Johnner said there will be probably more next year. Uh, I don't know if you guys were prepared for the number of people that showed up, or if even we were prepared for the number of people that showed up.
And that's something that you can't really predict and.
Correct. So, uh, as you compile your numbers, I do want it, uh, broken down by, um, tickets versus warnings and then per deputy, please.
Yep, can do that. Um, also, I would say with, uh, not all the contract deputies were here that weekend. Um, does come down to scheduling sometimes, but I believe next year, the plan is to have all of us here at least at some point, some point for Bean Days, so.
Correct.
So, um, other than that, is there any questions for sheriff's office or anything?
Has the volume of animal calls gone down? I know we had quite a few complaints coming in about animals running around town off-leash again.
Yeah. They've, I mean, it's, it's about the same as what it usually is. Um, there's now a new complaint over here at the trailer, trailer park. Um, this dog has been harassing people while they're trying to get on the bus for school, so that's another new issue that we're coming up with, but, um, since we've dealt with it the last time, I don't believe it's come up again, but if it does, obviously sheriff's office will take it.
Dangerous situation.
It, well, you, it's not a dangerous situation. I don't believe the dog was, it's more just barking and howling, um, at people. It has not bitten anybody, so. But turkeys, obviously, I mean, you keep driving around, you, you'll find the turkeys. Um, but other than that, I haven't really had any other animal calls besides, obviously, dogs without leashes. Um, turkeys, nobody really calls them in too much anymore, um, but who knows? It just depends on the day, so.
Okay. Also, uh, for your statistics that you're bringing back to us, please, um, average time per call and then by type of call.
Okay.
Cause we were told that you guys are spending a large amount of time on some stuff, and I would like to see that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it for me?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, number nine, refunding improvement bonds, and we'll start with Lucas.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I'll be discussing briefly the parameters resolution for refunding improvement bond series twenty twenty-four C. for refunding improvement bond series twenty twenty-four C. John Munby is here representing Colliers. If you have any specific questions related to this issuance, feel free to ask him or I any questions related to this one. This is to refund some temporary bond issuances that the city has done, temporary series twenty twenty-two B and twenty twenty-three B. The specific projects, I'll just go through their, their quick names, not the improvement district names. Cub Creek Second Edition, Wall Avenue East and West, Sixty-sixth Street, Sixty-third Street, Chestnut Drive, Ironwood, Enlift Station, SA Four, and then Rivers Edge Second Edition. So, what this does is provides permanent financing for, for those projects. The parameters resolution, again, for your knowledge, sets a not to exceed amount for the bonds and then a not to exceed interest on those bonds and also establishes the pricing committee. As always, pricing committee is the mayor and the city administrator. For this issuance, the not to exceed amount is ninety million and the not to exceed interest is six point two percent. And I believe you all received the parameters resolution last week. There are some changes to it. I do need to make red lines to remove. There was, oh, there's a lot of flies in here. There was reference to additional funds for Rivers Edge Second. Rivers Edge Second does not need any new money, so that reference within the parameters resolution will be removed, just for your reference.
Could you speak to a little bit, and it's probably just my not understanding the process, the differences in the numbers between the two temp bonds? At seventy-nine million, nine hundred and forty-five, but then we do to an up to maximum par amount of ninety. What is the difference?
The, so the biggest.
Why would there be difference, I guess?
It's a big difference and, and at, when we set the parameters at ninety million, there was discussions being had with the city on potential new money funding needed and a further delay in capitalized interest periods of when the specials could be certified and then assessed to be collected. And so, in both of those cases, we've worked with the city to remove the new money portion and also back down the, the amount of time that capitalized interest to allow for the districts to be completed. We were banking in two years. We're now back to banking in one year.
So, that ninety is high?
It's very high.
Okay, I just was trying to understand the difference in the numbers.
Yeah, we typically build in five percent as a cushion. As it sits today, we're sitting at probably ten or eleven percent. Before going on for marketing, the last run that we have, total bonds par amount raise, we're estimating about eighty million, five hundred and forty thousand. As it sits right now.
Say that number again.
Eighty million, five hundred and forty thousand, which would be a true refunding, refinancing of existing.
Of existing debt.
Temp debt, no new money.
Okay, that's why I was, okay.
Yep.
So, is the reason that it's not to exceed ninety just because we'd have to go through another exercise to update paperwork at this point?
It, yeah, it became a time function. It just didn't make sense to go through another round of paperwork.
So, maybe not a specific question to this, to this parameters, but, and you might not know this, but what, with this bond, what would our, what is our bonded debt and for total special assessments? And maybe you don't know that totally.
It is approximately two hundred and thirty million.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
And then I know we have some non-special assessment, more general obligation, like, like the water line replacement, right? In, in Horace proper, it's not special assessed.
Not, not special assessed, no.
Right, is that, that's, so that's a difference.
And that would, where we have like water projects.
Is that through state funding?
Well, we have some where it was a grant funded. The other portion of it is, we're working towards closing out those loans and then we'll have diversion dollars to pay for that. And then we have water meter replacements, but the water fund has that. That might be something that we may look at, do we pay that off early or not? But it's not a special assessed debt, so.
And at this point, again, going from memory, but I, the city doesn't have any general obligation debt.
Yeah, no, no geo debt.
So, would the two, the two thirty number would include this, this temp bond here?
Yep. Yeah, and so it's not, it's not two thirty plus. It's replacing existing.
Okay, okay.
This is no new debt and also the loan amounts that you're talking about, regards to water projects, Matt was showing me, it's around two point nine million.
Two point nine million.
But we have, like I said, we have reimbursements through diversion, through. With them, so that will go down once we have those all done. It's to pay off the SRF loan.
And then, just market it, from a market perspective, capital markets remain relatively stable. All things considered, take it with a grain of salt, but it is, it is a decent time. We're very, very mindful of this Wednesday's Fed meeting. We're expecting at least a quarter. There's now renewed talks after the weekend that there could be a half coming. And so, from a, from a rate perspective, like a cost perspective, we're coming in at the right time. Six and a quarter, six point two as a not to exceed. If we were pricing bonds today, we're probably somewhere in between five point one, five and five point two. And so, again, the over and above is just cushion, allowing flexibility to go out and execute on behalf of the city as best as possible.
I mean, I am wondering if we can still, I know I brought this up the last time, if we can look at the amount of money that we're paying in fees when we go through temporary to permanent. Is there any way we can negotiate that? Because I feel like we are spending astronomical amounts of money on fees, so.
So, we've provided city staff just recently a fully encapsulated study analysis of fees in both the marketplace and Horace specifically. I think it'd probably be best to get that information to the council, right, and have a discussion and then.
We're processing it to make sure we understand it. And Matt and I literally just.
We had the discussion.
Late this afternoon. Yeah. It's, it's.
And maybe it's just, I mean, I, it's very well, it's very possible that I'm not fully understanding all of the fees, but when I look at the math, it seems extremely high.
Sure.
When you have to get a fee for a temp bond and then you turn around and then you get a fee for that same bond going into a permanent bond. It just seems very high.
Yeah, and they did a comparison of bonds from, or two different categories for catering and everything and the two different types of sales and insured or not, but they pulled up quite a bit of data to be able to show and show averages and everything. So, we'll be able to have a good conversation here in the near future.
Very high level summary would be, we pulled over two hundred and forty-plus transactions of about four billion dollars in volume across the country. As we talked about last time, Horace doesn't really have a comparison. Other city that has its debt load, has what the positives that are going on. How, and so what we did is we took the rating tranches above and below Horace and in that two hundred and forty-five. And I, you know, I think the results are very positive and reflect well on, on the relationship that we have. But by all means, I, you know, we want to provide it, allow it to be internalized and then provide time for questions.
Sure, yeah, by and forth to that, thank you.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Good?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we're going to be looking for a motion. I believe you want a motion to approve refunding improvement bond. Is that correct?
Motion to approve the parameters resolution as presented.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the parameters resolution as presented. I'll second that.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Carries.
I did just have one quick question, probably more for staff. So, could you just remind me, what is the next step now in the special assessment process for these districts? Or is that not really, do you know what I'm saying?
So.
As we move towards.
They'll get assessed next year.
Yeah.
These will be the projects, these will be the projects that will go through assessment process next year. With, once this permanent bond is complete, we'll have the interest rate and we'll have a lot of information where then Jim will be able to start putting together the assessment sheets for the assessment commission to be able to start having their discussions. So, it does take quite a bit of time. There's quite a few projects there, but this will be the beginning process for the assessments for next year.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious on the timeline.
More work coming to you, Martin.
And.
Sorry, the reason for the timing of it is statutory. We, the city has to have its assessments done at a certain time point so that the county can levy the assessment. So, that's why you see the assessments this time of year, every year.
They're due by November first.
Oh, got it, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Jim, item number ten. Jase is up, so I'm assuming it's going to be Brenton?
Lucas. You assume wrong.
What?
I will take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So, what we have is a public hearing for a setback variance for an accessory structure located at sixty-eight, sixty-three Sunnyside Drive. The planning commission held a public hearing on this variance request last week, last Tuesday. They recommended approval of the variance to the city council. Under the city's ordinance, you can have accessory structures, I believe for this property. The setback is originally five feet, but because of the size of the structure, it increases. So, for every one hundred square feet over eight hundred and forty square feet, you add one foot. And so, because of the size of the accessory structure, the setback requirement for this lot ended up being twenty-eight feet. And so, there needs to be a variance of that, that setback amount. So, Jase has his staff report here. The applicant has stated that placing the structure with a rear yard setback of twenty-eight feet would interfere with the existing septic drain field where they're located. And so, the applicant is requesting to be able to place the proposed structure fifteen feet from the rear yard of the property. Again, this is a public hearing, so if you want to engage the applicant and then the public on any comments, you certainly can. At the planning commission's public hearing, I believe there was just one neighbor that was there and he was in support or didn't have any issues with the accessory structure. The property is located adjacent to County Road Seventeen, so the rear yard is adjacent to County Road Seventeen. There's trees and stuff up, so you can't really see, see the structure. Any, any other questions? I, I believe you've all received Jase's staff report. He does a very good job of detailing the recommendation of city staff and then the recommendation of the planning commission. City staff and the planning commission all recommended approval to the city council.
I'm just curious what, what the overall purpose of this shop is. Is it wood shop? Is it storage?
Yeah, hint is, is in attendance, so if the mayor would like to open the public hearing, we can ask questions directly to the applicant.
Go ahead and open that public hearing for sixty-eight, sixty-three Sunnyside Drive. And if you'd like, by all means, please go ahead and come on up to the front table here.
Mr. Seba, if you want to discuss your proposal with the council.
Thank you, sir. All right, sir, you had a question?
I did. What's the primary purpose of this shop? I see it's over three thousand square feet. What is your intended use for the shop?
I do hobby woodworking and I have to have a place to have the equipment. A lot of the equipment's pretty big. And also to store the product in there to, because it has to be air-conditioned, environment-controlled for the wood. So, that's kind of the main function of that building is to store the product. And then also to have my motorhome in there, camper in there in the summer, so it's not sitting outside. So, that'll take up quite a bit of the building.
A good portion of the shop, okay.
Yes.
So, do you have any specialty equipment such as plasma cutters, torches, any gas wielding equipment that will go in that shop?
No. No, it's mostly just for woodworking.
Woodworking?
Yep.
Good. That answers my questions. Those are easy questions, especially since you're on the back half of Seventeen. But I noted you've been in our community for fifty-one years. That's wonderful. Thank you for staying and being a resident of our community. I, I have no further questions on this. It's got over an acre there and it sounds like a nice addition to the property.
I agree, Sam.
I have no, I have no questions.
I don't either.
I have no questions, please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
All right, what are you looking for for action for?
If there's any other public comment from anyone besides the applicant, which doesn't appear.
And Bill? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance application at sixty-eight, sixty-three Sunnyside Drive.
Okay, I got a motion. Any further discussion? Can I get a second on the motion?
Yeah, okay.
All right, everybody wants.
Yeah.
Let them have it, go ahead.
We like the fun ones.
These are fun. Fine, Rachel's got it.
We like these. Excited to see this, sir.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, number eleven, fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, Brenton. It's bottom line up front.
Bottom line up front. There's, the memo outlines the majority, really, the main changes that have occurred within this for the twenty twenty-five budget, this preliminary budget going to the final, we need to have a public hearing related to our budget. The main change was reducing the three percent budgeted COLA to a two and a half percent. The memo identifies for each fund where you had some just rebalancing of it. Majority of it either went to, for each of those funds, either went into water, into the reserves or contingency or a combination. In addition, we did put in a sales tax budget into that. Pretty basic for the sales tax, just Matt generates projections of what we anticipate for sales tax for a couple of years out. So, we put that into a very simple budget to show that fund. In twenty-four, we didn't, for the twenty-four budget, we didn't have one originally. We'll probably amend one in later this year within our budget. But for this time period, we wanted to include that within the preliminary budget. So, the cap, so when we did have the preliminary budget, that set the cap for property taxes levied and that cannot exceed the amount that has been identified. We do not have any other changes within this. But with that, we can stand to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, sir, well, sir, you got questions?
Are we doing a public hearing first?
Well, you could do, you could do your public hearing or if you have questions, either one. We do need to address the public hearing.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. We go ahead and open the public hearing then for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. Can I introduce yourself?
Okay, Martin Holter, one oh six oh nine, County Seventeen South. Written down my bullet points here and I got a couple ideas, not specific items on the budget, but just, I think, spending in general. You know what we've seen in the city of Horace is budgets have been inflated since I moved here in twenty thirteen. It's been this hockey stick type growth in our budget. And in recent years, it's mainly due to this increase in property value, right? Like, we, you know, while it makes a good talking point, we've kept the mills the same, we haven't raised mills. The city has taken advantage of increased home values, which have increased the amount of revenue coming into the city, ultimately dollar spend, so. In my mind, I feel like there's a couple of things that can be done to reduce waste, manage spending, right? Because that's the other half of the equation. Revenue's one half, spending's the other half. And so, you know, here's a couple of ideas that I had, and I don't know if they've been followed up on. First off, I think it'd be beneficial to develop a protocol for purchasing items over a specified dollar value and publish it on the city website. I brought this up, I was at this council meeting earlier this spring. That came up again and it wasn't really clearly defined. I mean, we have an item we want to purchase. We don't know what the dollar value is. Sometimes we get other quotes. You see, like, you use Sourcewell, whatever. There's not a defined mechanism in, from my knowledge, that says, when I want to go purchase something, here's how we purchase it. Am I getting the best deal? Am I getting the best deal, right? Am I getting the best value is a better way to say it. So I'd like to see, you know, personally, I mean, I think I'd like to see multiple sources to be contracted to ensure the best price. The Sourcewell program, despite what's been said, is not always the best price. I've worked for the state government. I know people have worked for state governments, municipality governments. I think it's easy. I think that's why we do it. In addition, I think an emphasis could be placed on local businesses, you know, where purchasing, yeah, it might cost you $100 more purchasing from the car dealer in Fargo versus the car dealer in Burnsville, Minnesota, for instance. Those dollars are gonna stay in the area and bounce around and have a lot better economic impact. So I, that's one idea. The second one, focus on things that make the city run, right? We say the city is business. We always say that. A lot of people say that. And so I think more focus needs to be on what will drive city business and move away from distractions. In my current role, I have lots of ideas and I have that freedom to come up with ideas. There are certain things that drive the business. There's things that I need to do and there's things that I'd like to do, right? And the big thing is doing the things that I need to do. And if I have time to do things I like to do, that's great, but it doesn't always work that way. You know, for instance, you know, if a new position is being requested, I mean, does that mean that the staff are fully occupied with their duties? Is it, if it's, I mean, for, in my mind, it's hard to propose a position be funded, but we have days to stuff Easter eggs, for instance. I mean, that's a need to do versus a nice to do, right? Focusing on big things that drive city business first and filling with the nice to have. Third, efficiency and efforts. And I'm gonna pick on the boulevard tree program. I'm a horticulturist, I'm a plant person, love trees, and it's not a, not a knock on that. But, you know, is it the best use of city times, time to plant boulevard trees by our city staff? You know, there was a topic on the agenda here about boulevard trees. Perhaps a local wholesale landscaper might be a better investment in time and resources. A local company might be able to sell plant water, which we know trees don't get watered. Warranty the trees, which is, was a topic on the agenda. So they might be able to do all this full service, even though it may cost a little bit more. It's saving staff time and staff resources and money, right? Meanwhile, you know, we're in a city of 5,000 people, so I mean, we're adding a refrigerator truck and we're adding this piece of equipment, that piece of equipment, to staff to help plant trees and this and that. I don't know if those options have been fully explored. And then, and aside, those are my three big ones, maybe small potatoes in the scheme of a large budget. But I did have a question about this land investment. There was a piece of property purchased and I asked about it this spring and I never did follow up on it, why that piece of property was purchased. And it kind of resurfaced here last meeting and the last meeting about a possible land swap. I'm just curious about why the piece of property was purchased, what the intent was and why we'd consider, and I don't know how the meeting ended last time, but why we would consider swapping that land for another piece of land potentially? Because that's a big expense. So I was wondering if you'd be able to speak to that?
We can't. That was in executive session, so.
You can't even speak to what happened, why?
We can say that we did direct Lucas to investigate even the possibility of selling that piece of land directly or if we have to go the route of public auction.
Okay.
That is literally what we can say about that meeting.
Okay. Do you know why that piece of land was purchased in the first place? That's a big expense.
Understood. So that, that piece of land was purchased for future use for the city, it should come to that. Whether we want to put something down there for, whether it's public works or whether the city would use it for some other purpose. And even if need be, the city could sell it and the city can sell it potentially for a profit. So it's, it's simply trying to position the city, have a piece of land if you did need to do something. Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Martin.
Anybody else for budget? Okay. Discussion amongst yourselves. You got anything, sir?
Regarding budget?
Yep.
Why did we increase the contingency amounts on vector and forestry?
Money had to go somewhere.
So you just put it in contingency?
Yep.
So it wouldn't be tied up, locked up in any way, shape or form?
Correct. It can be used if it needs to be used.
And then I saw that we increased our transfer to reserves, both water and sewer. And the reasoning for that was?
The same thing.
Okay.
The money had to, had to go somewhere to present a balanced budget.
The priority.
Put it in reserves.
Yeah. And the priority throughout the budget process was to build reserves.
I understand.
Through the various funds.
And that's for direct relation with bonding and obviously interest rates and things of that nature with collars. The rest of this, I think some of the transfers on general fund and highly fund I'm clear on because obviously I'm involved in that.
Did you call it that far or was that the end?
No, I'm sorry. I'm eyeballing just a couple of things. But I don't, I don't see anything's changed, so I think that's all I have at this point.
All right, Stephanie, you looked at it.
Oh, Naomi, yeah, I've, I'm going, okay. I want to say I, I agree with, Martin brings up very good points and I would like to see us research all of those issues. One, one, one thing that maybe caught me a little, a little off is could we clarify? Martin mentioned a refrigerator truck. We don't, we don't have that on his purchase.
We do not own one. We rent one.
Okay, okay. So I wanted to make sure that I was, that I wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yeah. We, we rent one towards the city for the trees, just for that time period. And that's to keep the trees cool and then we have a sprinkler within there to keep them wet.
What is that time period roughly that it takes in the spring?
Well, this year it took a little longer because of all the rain. You're in Walpark. Ideal year would be about three weeks, three to four weeks. This year it took longer, like I said, because we had a very wet spring. And you guys would be ready to go plant and then it'd rain on us and repeat.
Have we, I, I know you brought up something else about Easter eggs. I was kind of laughing, all due respect. The, the stuffing Easter eggs is actually a fun activity, Martin. And I had the privilege of being asked to partake over the last several years and I've taken home boxes of Easter eggs and stuffed them on the weekends with my daughter. But I wasn't sure, how, how do we do that at city? I know that we did it over lunch one day when I was there.
Typically, like when staff is stuffing Easter eggs, we'll do like team building where we'll have all staff get together and almost use like a team building time. We have done that. We do that about once a year, sometimes twice. Also, like front office staff, like the receptionist position or right there when they're answering phones, you know, in the meantime, we're bouncing in between, they may go stuff a couple of eggs and then answer the phone, stuff a couple of eggs, answer the phone, things like that. So also, like, like you mentioned, you know, council, a lot of times council does take eggs. Staff takes them sometimes, you know, stuff them outside of, you know, typical work or something. Like I'll bring them home on occasion and say, okay, let's tackle some at home, just like the council would.
Sitting on a webinar, I'll do it during the webinar.
Yeah, if we're going through something that we need to pay attention to, but it's, while we're still keeping busy, we'll do it those times also, so.
I think the other points were phenomenal, bi-local and obviously, I love, I love bi-local. And just looking at some of the expenditures, I think we're on to something there.
So on the bi-local really quick is if something makes sense to buy a local, we will. But if something is significantly more expensive to buy it local versus not, we're gonna go away and kind of approach the council, does this make sense or not? And if it doesn't, then we'll end up gaining it where it may, where it's the most cost effective. If it's something that may cost, you know, say it's a hundred dollar tool or something and it costs $110 to go local. Okay, we'll get where we're, like one of the suppliers we work with or whatever. So we, we do use judgment on that. Like when we're buying vehicles or larger equipment, we work with a lot of times local dealers, vehicles. We work with the dealership out in Fergus Falls because they're one of the closest fleet dealers. So we're working with who does fleets and then also for pricing, we will compare Sourcewell or if they have state contract pricing, we'll work with our sales rep from those different entities saying, okay, what is, what makes the most sense? Can you price it for both if you can? If not, one is the best for the city. So we do compare them. It's using those, and also like Sourcewell, for example, is more cooperative purchasing. So they go through a bidding process already so that you could go straight to those entities and say, okay, this is what I'm looking for.
And I guess I just have a few other comments. I know that we are increasing our funding for our community events and I just want to point out that I do, I do fully support that. I think it's a very good connection to try to maintain our small town atmosphere for residents, for residents to get to know each other. But I want to make sure residents are aware in that light item that for every event, we aggressively pursue sponsorships. And we've had, we've had great success. And so it's not that we're just increasing our, our funding for it. I've been very proud of the efforts of sponsorship for events, so we do a very good job with that. I just wanted to point that out. And then just maybe say for clarification too, I know we'll have to do it in different meetings. You know, our budget does show increased revenue over last year of $921,964. $350,000 of that increase is from interest earnings and $155,000 is an increase in state aid because of our increased population over last year. And let's see. And $400,000 of, am I getting that right, Matt? $400,000 of our spending is actually investment into our reserves or our savings accounts. $250,000 in general reserves and $150,000 in emergency. And I do support the increase in those reserves as we have the funds. And so while it may look like our budget is increasing quite a bit, a lot of it is, I think, for targeted areas that are prudent for this year. I would like to watch closely the cost in our tree program going forward. And I do also recognize that we're making significant investment in various fleet purchases this year. Vehicles, a snowplow, mowers, that I think, and I do support that. But I think that's gonna set us up pretty well this year then. I, I don't see us needing to have a lot of additional investment into those fleet items in the years going forward. And those are my thoughts.
Okay, Naomi?
Yeah, I echo Stephanie's thoughts on those. I take the budget very, very seriously. I like to be fiscally responsible with the tax dollars. You know, given we, you know, have to ensure we have the reserves. I am pleased to see that we were able to put some of that away into reserves. And just being mindful of the, the needs versus wants are extremely important to me. I think this year has been okay, I guess. I'm, I'm not opposed to this budget that we have this year, knowing that our community is growing and next year it could look completely different, so I'm good.
Okay. Rachel?
Yeah, I agree that it's not our money. It's the residents' money, so I was looking at it closely. Where are the, maybe we've already talked about this, but the Prairie Dog funds? Because where are those or just those heavens?
Those aren't a budgeted fund, so this would be your budgeted operating funds. So Prairie Dog is not reflected as a budgeted fund. It acts almost like a reserve fund.
Right. No, I don't really have any questions about the budget. I think we've talked about it now a few times and I feel comfortable with it. I think I really did like Martin's comments, especially about developing a protocol for purchasing items over a certain dollar amount. I do appreciate Brenton saying that you do find multiple sources and you do try local. But I do think it's an interesting thought to have a defined mechanism or just a, I don't know. Just good to keep in mind, something to maybe think of.
I agree.
And I agree with one's comment from Stephanie that I didn't, I don't know if I came across well enough. The, the newspaper ran an article earlier this year giving the impression that we are spending money by putting it in reserves. I don't believe that is true. To me, that is putting it in savings. The money is not spent yet. It's sitting in reserves. We need to build our reserve funds. And yes, right now we, we are not there yet for a full six months of reserves.
We're, we're not quite there. I believe the end of the year, I don't have the capex in front of me, but I think we talked about there being about 58 days, so almost two months.
Okay.
And if you recall, this time last year, we had about 16 days, so we're doing a really good job. We did a really great job in 2023. We're gonna do an even better job this year to get closer to that three to six month target. But I, I feel confident that, that we're heading in the right place.
Good. Any other public comments? Probably close the public comment period. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing then. What's, what are you looking for?
I'm guessing Brent's looking for you to approve something.
Right.
As long as it's legal covered in the budget, I would say that would make me happy.
Hey, that's good. I appreciate that.
The 2025 budget is.
If you are comfortable approving the budget, you can. Once we have the approval of the budget through this meeting or through the next one, then we'll send that to the county. So they have that in their, on hand for allocating the right amount for property taxes. So they need to have that, I believe, by October 10th.
October 10th, but they loved it yesterday.
Yeah, they would love it as soon as possible, so.
Understood.
If you are good with the budget, then we'll be able to take action.
Okay, I will look for a motion, see what you guys want to do.
Are you guys okay with passing the budget as is?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 budget.
Okay, I got a motion. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right. Moving on, number 12. Property tax exemption request.
I will fill in for Jace on this one, so I'll try my best here. What you have before you is a property tax exemption request from Dakota Timber, 1095 Ubedja Drive. They are working with the Firehole Moorhead EDC. So we do have Ran Asham here and I believe owner tied to Dakota Timber, I believe. So they're here, they can answer any questions you have regarding the application in particular. So Jace created the memo here for you, highlighting or summarizing the application request and what we're working with. Dakota Timber is looking to relocate or relocate into Horace. They're in Fargo right now and they're currently outgrowing their space. Right now, what they're saying is that they have eight employees, five full-time and three part-time. And over the next five years with this, they would create eight, eight more new jobs. That's a combination of part-time and full-time. It's outlined within the application. I did give you a copy of the application at your seat there. If anybody does need a copy of it, still I do have a couple others, I believe, if needed. So I do have some there. Pass them to Matt there if needed, so. Apologize, we thought that was posted online. We did have the memo and the letter from the state identifying it as a primary sector business. Dakota Timber, they focus on wood manufacturing company and specializes in reclaimed wood products, including furniture, floating mantles, filling shells, stair drams, beams, cutting boards, et cetera. Very unique type of features that they have. Their request here is for a five-year 100% for that location. That would be for a 12,000 square foot area. I believe it's about double the size of what they currently are. I believe it's about double the size of what they currently are. Is that correct or?
It's production area.
Production area. It's about double the size. Ten thousand square feet of this twelve thousand would be for production with two thousand being for the showroom. Between land and the building costs, you're looking at about one point seven million dollars. And the total taxes being exempted within the request estimated at twenty thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Keep in mind that is total, not just the city portion. City, we make up about twenty-five percent of property taxes property occurs. Around twenty, or twenty percent. Matt's correcting me there. When you look at that, it ends up being around twenty-one thousand two hundred for the city or combined over the five years. So, the math gets a little complicated here within the memo where we talk about company estimates. So, the company estimates over that five-year period, estimated revenue of twelve point eight million is reflected within the application that in theory, if you had all the sales tax dollars come straight to the city, the two percent, there would be a two hundred and fifty-six thousand in sales tax over the five years. However, a good portion of, or a portion of what they do produce, you're going to have some of that delivered or delivered to sites outside of Horace. The material or the goods that are delivered within Horace or picked up on site, that's where sales tax applies. We also factored in, just to give you a general idea of assuming forty percent of the building cost, that would generate approximately another twelve thousand in sales tax revenue just for the construction of the building. So, that's where the numbers come out. The two hundred and forty-six thousand, let's just say for conversation, it was fifty percent of, just for example, fifty percent of what they produce is picked up or delivered within Horace, then that would give us a sales tax over the five-year period of a hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred.
So,
Daniel?
Okay, so, so the numbers.
The numbers aren't.
The numbers are reflective.
They're reflective of the application, but it was not the consideration of, oh, quite, you know, the items that they sell aren't all acquired on site. So, if it's delivered somewhere else, we don't get that sales tax revenue. The place where that item is delivered is where sales tax is. But if somebody picks up the good from their location, then it is, it goes to the city.
And so, and so that number, what was the number you said? One twenty-nine thousand over five years?
Yep.
In sales tax.
Between sales tax from estimate of, if you assume fifty percent of the goods are to Horace and you have the construction of a building, you're in a hundred twenty-nine thousand. And I'm just giving you a ballpark in a scenario. It could be different.
Meaning the city would capitalize on two hundred and fifty-six thousand sale tax, sales tax revenue. That should actually be reduced.
It's, yeah. And, and these are just a ballpark to give you an idea. So, the North Dakota Department of Commerce has identified this as a primary sector business. And as one of the requirements for that, a copy of that letter was provided into your packet there. And tonight, there is a public hearing in regards to testimony from any competitors, for non-competitors, and also residents can be able to comment towards that.
You only open the public hearing?
Yep, you could too. And just, just a second here. The last point I was going to make here is that for any requests of five years or less, although it does, you know, does impact other tax entities, if it's over five years, school district and county are typically considered within those consideration or thought or reviews and negotiations. Century Codes calls out specifically school districts. I did touch base with the school district here just that, just over the weekend here and got a response today. Anything in five years or less, they don't participate in any negotiations from the city in regards to what that, or exemption would be. And so, now with that, it is in the hands of the city council. If you're comfortable with the five years full hundred percent or if you want to discuss that with applicant, you're more than welcome to. So, with that, if you want to do a public hearing.
Anybody in the public or in the audience want to, want to visit about the application? Okay, does council have questions for the actual applicant?
Are you moving completely out of Fargo? Or are you keeping?
Potentially.
Another locate, like is this another location?
No, we would move completely out of Fargo. We're renting right now. I bought the business a little over a year, excuse me, a little over a year ago. And just want to, there, there's, there's a lot that we want to do as far as production space. But the safety of our employees is a big issue for me. It's an older building right now. There's poor ventilation for, we do some spraying and all that kind of stuff. Sometimes some of our products, it's all water-based, which is safe, but it's, my background's insurance and I don't, I just want to get up to tone and, and, you know, with proper fire suppression and all that kind of stuff.
So, you bought the business? And you've owned it for?
A little over a year.
What is your name?
Drew Fisher.
Okay.
We'll have you come up to the, to the microphone here just so that people in the online can hear you as well. So, you've owned the business for a little over a year.
Yep.
Okay, previous owners did a lot of charity work, I guess, for the, the Boy Scouts. You guys going to continue that? I guess I, I don't, I don't know if we have the Pinewood Derby cars come up yet. Have they?
Not yet.
Not yet. So, they used to be able to use that facility to, to help decorate and build their cars.
Oh, cool. I was unaware of that.
Okay.
That's really cool though. We've done some other stuff like for Fargo baseball, help fund their travel, that sort of stuff. But, so we're always looking to do stuff like that.
Okay.
I have a hard question for you. Do you want an incentive or do you need an incentive?
Uh, both. I think the, obviously the incentive would move things along a lot more quickly. Like, to be completely transparent, this wasn't even on our radar to move until we visited with a few other business owners in town. And we started pursuing this primary sector, which again, I had to do a lot of learning. I was educated on it. Sorry, that was loud for anybody online. Had to do a lot of learning on what it even was. And we qualify because we bring more business in from outside the state. And I started learning more about it and just it would be a really good incentive for us to do it in Horace. And just like you guys say, horizons expand here. We have some really big dreams. I'm a dreamer. Really big dreams for this company.
Quick question. Would it be a complete deterrent to not have the tax exemption?
To, to actually move to Horace? It would for sure delay the process.
Just a question.
Yeah. But it could be, anything could happen, but we'd probably continue looking and weighing options.
Are you open to not utilizing a full five years? Would you, are you, are you here saying, I'll take what I can get? Or are you here saying, like, this is, this is what I'm asking and this is what I want? And if I don't receive this, then I'm not coming here. I'm sorry for all the really hard questions.
No, I'm, I'm not really here to play hardball. This is, this is all new to me too. That's something I haven't thought about. I came in just thinking that the five years is what was offered. So, that was kind of where my mind was.
I mean, currently, we don't have a policy in place regarding any business incentives. So, it's really like, this is our first for us. So, it's a little bit gray to me, a little bit. So.
So, unfortunately, I deal with incentives all the time with my work, having to deal with production tax credits and things of that nature. So, I work in renewables, in the renewable energy industry. And as you know, that can be a very volatile industry.
Yeah.
Depending on which administration you're involved in. However, I will say this. A hundred percent tax incentive over five years is not something that customarily I would agree to. I will say that as your business grows and progresses, typically it is a standard policy and negotiation to say, we take more of a stepped approach. And so, we would look at maybe a hundred percent that first year as you're getting up and running and getting your employees. And then that second year, we would take that to an eighty percent, right? So, that as you're getting established and getting your products sold, the city's seeing a little piece more, still helping substantially. And then taking that to a forty percent and a twenty percent and eventually a zero. Timeframes are indiscriminate. It all really depends on the size of the business and what your plans are to bring to either a, the project or the community, right? So, you said that you were looking at initially approximately thirty-five. You have eight employees now, looking at going up to how many?
I mean, we hope to double in five years. Honestly, hope to do more than that. And I think there, there's opportunities that we're pursuing right now that the time will tell, but we're actively, we want to grow.
Right. And I, I think you'll find Horace to be a rather inviting community. We've had some oddball situations we've discussed tonight, but overall, of course, a pretty, pretty pleasant place to be. You know, we've got some amazing schools. We've got some amazing families. Here we have some, some legacy families. We have young, new families coming in. It, it's really a wonderful blend. And so, a lot of these people are coming from a very diverse background. And you've got a lot of woodsmen, hunters, things of that nature, farm families here. And so, anything timber is very appealing in this particular community. I've found almost every home that I've been in in this town has a piece of something or another that is, is wood and beautifully decorated, right? So, I guess if it were me and I'll all open it up to the rest of the council, I would propose more of a stepped approach. I'm not opposed to the term. I think that that really determines on growth and it sounds like you're a very progressive individual. And so, I'm less concerned about that. But a share in things. So, as you get successful, the city's balance, it balances out a little bit better. Usually is an approach that I would take to start.
Forgive me, I don't know a lot about this business. Is this like a big box business or like night nation wide? So, it is a local to Fargo area?
Yep.
And I do have some comments. I guess they're not actually directed to our applicant because I would absolutely love to have you in Horace. And I hope that you join our very busy industrial park and I'd love to see your business here. But my concern is we, Horace has not previously endeavored into business incentives before. It would be completely new territory for our city. So, that means we don't have, we don't have a policy that would, that sets out what the city's goals are, our needs or our targets or how we would achieve, how we would achieve those in offering incentives and how applicants would be reviewed and how the city would determine if incentives are needed to incent growth, which I think is the goal of incentives. We have no metrics in place for business incentives that would be important to have, I think, in our decision-making process. I know we briefly discussed a policy a few months ago, but we didn't do much more with it at that time. And, you know, like we've discussed, I, to me, for the most reason that you have an incentive is to identify a specific target or utilized to develop an area that's lacking, under, underdeveloped or blighted. And I just don't see our industrial park is lacking or lagging in growth. I think it's actually growing very rapidly right now. If we decided to move in this new direction, I think we had brief discussion when we looked at a policy, it would be important to me to have resident input either in a public comment or a public hearing phase because that would be an entirely new direction for the city. It'd be a big decision. And what the residents think would be important to me to make an informed decision. I mean, as we know, we're currently growing at a tremendous rate. We can hardly sustain our growth, residentially, commercially and in the industrial park. And that's been natural business growth up to date, up to date, without the needs for incentives to incent it. We've, and we've also actually recently proved we didn't need residential incentives to grow our residential population either. There's nothing wrong with natural growth. I think there's a time and a place for incentives. And if I felt we needed them because we were lagging in growth or there was an area that we needed it, then I would absolutely support it. But I just don't, I just don't see that at this time. And again, I would love to have you come to Horace and I, and I hope you do join our city. But we've not offered before. I just don't think I'm comfortable with it tonight. Once we open the door, there's no going back. I, I don't know, incentives would be expected then going forward. And how would we say no to other businesses going forward? And what would be our metrics? I think it'd be arbitrary. It's arbitrary at this point. We don't have a policy and I don't, I don't know how we can proceed forward like that. If we can't offer every business an incentive going forward, how do we, how are we picking our winners and losers? As well as all of our current businesses that came and joined the city just a natural way. So, you have a wonderful business and I hope you do join us. But I just don't think we're in a position right now to move forward with business incentives. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, I, I am on a little bit of a different angle here. I actually really like this idea. I have a couple quick questions though. So, the North Dakota Economic Development Finance Division certified Dakota Timber as a primary sector and a new wealth creator in the economy of North Dakota for four years. Is that the standard amount of time that they? Or is that the amount of time that they think that this business will be generating wealth in the community? Do you guys know if the four years is how much time they believe?
I, I do not know how long they do that.
Because I didn't know if, if they are, if they're a new wealth creator, I don't know. Because I didn't know if that was a number to follow in the future as far as the incentive amount of time or something. But I do think that property tax that we don't have is, I mean, there's not a loss here, right? There's just a net positive, it looks like. And I think Horace should be really business-friendly, especially looking at West Fargo versus Fargo and how much more sales tax that they bring in, in Fargo versus West Fargo. I do think we should be friendly to businesses. And especially, this is a really cool company. I know a lot of people with mantles from you guys. I think it is a really niche thing that a lot of people know about in the community and it would be really cool to have in Horace. So, I, I actually really would support this.
And I just have two other comments that are also not related. I'd like to see our packet updated. So, the application is included in there, in the team's packet in public. And also, I'd like to see, as we discussed, Brent, I'd like to see the memo updated with the correct numbers.
Yes. I mean, I would be okay with the stepped approach. I'd rather have them have some incentives versus none. So, if, like if Sarah, I'm, I think that's worth discussing as well. Having it stepped down, it is logical to me that you would reduce support as time goes on.
Okay. Further discussion at all?
What do we think is a reasonable period of time?
You talking about the number of years or?
I'm not sure. How did you guys come up with five? I don't know if this is, you know, what is standard? Do you know?
Because if it's over five, there are certain requirements that have to be met under the statute to notify the school, townships and county. And if it's under five, you don't need an agreement with them.
The, the schools and counties at that point, if, let's say it was a ten-year, they could, they could opt out.
Right.
At five years, they, they, my understanding cannot, cannot opt out. It's a city council decision or local government decision.
How rare is it to become a primary sector or new wealth creator in, in the economy of North Dakota? How rare would it be to get this letter?
Do you, do you want me to answer?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Grant.
So, primary sector is a designation. North Dakota certifies it. Not all states do, but essentially it means a company is a new wealth generator. So, over fifty percent of their sales come from outside of this local market. So, they add value or knowledge to good or service and then their. So they add value or knowledge to good or service, and then their customers are located either nationally or globally. So when you think about incentivizing businesses, primary sector make up about 5% of any local economy. So in this market, about 450 primary sector businesses support the other 13,000 non-primary sector businesses. So it's not to say that Big Erbs and, and headquarters aren't great. I, I say those businesses make a community livable. They're, they're the reasons that people want to live and have a family in a community. But the wealth generators are those primary sector companies that are the engines of economic activity. So the other ways are tourism, it's transfer payment. So if you have retirees that are getting social security, if you have an air force base, if you have a university, those are all other ways that wealth come into your community. But in most places, primary sector are the drivers of that. So that's why the state has carved out provisions in its century code for primary sector businesses. They allow technically up to 20 years for a property tax exemption. Five years is kind of the standard based on what other communities in the market are offering. So West Fargo, Moorhead, Fargo, Castleton, there's examples of projects typically starting at five years. We've done some at 10 and 15 years for larger projects with a larger economic.
What is your name?
I'm Ryan Oss, I'm sorry. Greater Fargo Moorhead Economic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
So we won't be seeing this letter over and over again. This isn't setting a?
So it's four years because the state within a four-year time period recognizes that a business can pivot and change course, and that may affect their qualifications for primary sector. So if they start becoming more local in nature, that may mean they're no longer primary sector. If they start doing just more retail-type activities, it would, it would, you know, change their qualification.
Mr. Fisher, have you reached out to other communities to ask for the same thing?
No.
Okay.
You would like to be in Morris?
I would. Yeah.
Do you currently live here in Morris?
No, we live, I don't know where, Far, South Fargo, or not far, we're not far from Morris. Not, not that that matters, but we're probably five, 10 minutes away, less than 10 minutes away.
Well, I tell you, I, I see some real positives here, and I, I don't want to put a stop on, on anything. But because this is so new to this council, I, I think that we are on to something that we need to look at what a, what a potential policy may look at, or what some guidelines, whether it doesn't necessarily even need to be a policy, but what some guidelines would look like prior to doing this. I, I'm not opposed to incentivization to the right business. But I want to make sure that we're getting the proper feedback and that everyone's having an opportunity to really look at it and understand what, whether it be a tiered approach, a stepped approach. I think there's some explanation. I see some deer in the headlights, so I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. For that reason, I would propose tabling this discussion until the next meeting, simply to work some of those things out amongst all the groups and all the council members, not to delay or create issues for you, but to make sure that what we're doing, we're all on the same page. We have some very varied opinions here, and I'd like there to give people an opportunity to get some public feedback, have an opportunity to work with council, have this explained to them. Take a look at neighboring communities, what other types of businesses have been incentivized, and how does this business compare to that? And then take a look at what we have in our community right now and what the long-term goal would be with Dakota Timber, should you, and hopefully you do, choose to join the Horace community. Is anyone here opposed to that?
No, not opposed.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and, your, your knowledge then, I will go ahead and table this for right now and bring this back to the next, to the next meeting, if that's okay.
So in the meantime, are you proposing that we, that, I don't know, do we want more documentation? Do we just want more time to look at it individually?
I, I'd like to charge the city with the responsibility of bringing some awareness regarding tax incentives.
Chapter 40 dash 57.1.
Thank you.
So we have, we have worked on a draft economic incentives policy for the city. I'll visit with Jase, and we'll see where, where we could be with that one. It was tabled for a while there, and we could bring, we could hash through.
Sure. I mean, I personally feel like incentives need to be a case-by-case basis. Sure have a policy or some kind of guidelines, but like, I'm looking at factors of what sales tax, you know, what it actually would bring into the community. Because there are businesses that would most likely come to Horace that would ask for an incentive that really, there would be no return to the city. And I've shared that with you, Sarah, regarding certain businesses.
You have. Yeah.
And so I'm not opposed to looking at it case by case. But I do want to make sure that we're doing the right thing because the residents have growing pains here. As you have, I don't know if you've paid attention to Horace and the growing pains that we had. But the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of residents are feeling a lot of heat when it comes to taxes and making, you know, paying for things. And when we give an incentive to a business, it's basically, in my mind, saying, okay, well, the business is really important. I'm sorry, you don't get an incentive, Horace resident. You don't get one either. And it's hard because they're feeling the growing pains, and then we could really use that money on the front end? That's, that's my concern, is when we allow for the incentive, it makes things harder on the books with the budget, because then we're looking at increasing mills or we're looking at doing all these other things to run a city, but we're lacking, if that makes sense.
It does. I think there needs to be a little more education about how the incentives work and how they impact not only the businesses that are asking for them, but the cities in return. I will tell you that there is zero sales tax if you have no business. So you have to weigh.
Yeah, yeah. I totally get it. But that's why I asked the hard question, you know, are you, like, do you want it? Are you, would you be here with or without it? I mean, that's important to me. Because I want, I definitely want to see your business here, and I want to be very friendly to new businesses coming to town. We definitely need you guys.
Anybody asking for incentivism can answer that question honestly.
But there have been. I have, I have heard it in Fargo. I have listened to meetings, and they have been honest and said, yeah, we're gonna be here no matter what. And, or, no, we're not gonna buy that land, or no, we're not. And, you know, they will be honest. I, I have seen it. And so just to be a good neighbor, I, I don't know why that would be a bad thing to ask somebody. And I will ask that to everyone who comes here for it and stuff.
I'm not saying it's bad, but people that want an incentive, and almost everyone's gonna ask for the max, and almost everyone.
They always will. Yes, absolutely. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. Of course, you're gonna, why not? Ask for it if you can. It's not a bad thing to ask for it, but I think be mindful.
Any concerns about?
Really quick, I was just gonna say, well, I'll visit with Jase. We'll talk about the economic incentives policy. That addresses quite a bit of what you're discussing tonight. Just something for the council to consider when you are looking at these in the future also, and even currently, is this is a business that wants to locate in Horace, in our industrial park, not a shop condo where it's just, it's creating jobs. It's, that's, that's something to keep in mind is, in the industrial park, we're trying to encourage to have businesses there that either create jobs, sales tax, wealth in the community or regions. So it's a combination, isn't just one, always, it, it, they might be stronger in one component than another. But when you have industrial parks, you're really trying to create those jobs in the tax base in your community one way or another. So anyways, just want to encourage you to keep that in mind because it's, it's nice to have these different businesses like this come into our industrial park. Instead of just being a garage or hobby shop necessarily, so.
You just happened to be the first one requesting this type of incentive. Bear with us as we sort through it.
It's my first time asking for it too, so. No, I totally get it. And I appreciate the hard questions, Naomi.
Yeah.
I would say that it's not a no, but it's, we'll probably look elsewhere too. You know, that's, because we just kind of have to. We wouldn't be able to do it without some sort of incentive. So we might just, it might just be down, down the road or somewhere else.
And we want you here and profitable, right? We're not just here, but also, you know, that helps everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. So Lucas, public hearings gonna be left open then, when we table this?
It's still open right now.
Correct. It's gonna be left open then?
If you want to continue the public hearing to your next meeting, then yes, that's, that's what you can do.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do that, then we'll go ahead and table this for, for right now. Thank, thank you for coming, both of you. Do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right. 13's been tabled already. Thanks.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Take care. All right. Number 14, Water Sewer Stormham Street Improvement District, 2022-12, River Edge Second Edition. Looks like, talking about change order, Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So we have an attached change, a change order that includes five items, sanitary sewer discharge redesign and treatment plant connection redesign. This is in relation to the Rivers Edge Second and the Ball slash Jubilee Equine easement. There was some issues with getting that easement in a timely manner. There were concessions, some concessions made, some concessions made as far as the construction from an open cut gravity system to a directionally drilled board system that is pressurized. That limited the amount of disruption to their pasture and lessened the amount of easement that was required. The second item we have is pond landscape and irrigation redesign allowance. This was presented to the city council at a previous date and approved in concept, contingent upon a maintenance agreement. Number three is the Minco to gate access on the north side of the property. On the south side, 76th Avenue, there is a transmission line owned by Minco to electric. They required some gates and an existing fence to allow access to those poles. Number four was a Hammerhead turnaround roadway tie-in. This is at the end of Hegbin Drive, which is a private drive, but it comes out to a public street. So rather than put a temporary turnaround in or something of that nature, it was decided through some, I don't know if you want to say value engineering or what, rather than do something that's gonna get ripped out in a short order to just continue the street and make a Hammerhead tie-in for fire and public works and that, if there needs to be in that area. And then number five was a contract time extension due to the above four. So as I stated previously, item number two was previously discussed and proven concept by the city council, contingent upon a approval maintenance agreement. The maintenance agreement is not yet complete. We do have the final plans now to make the final recommendations in that maintenance agreement. So our request and motion tonight is to approve the change order as presented, except for item number two. Approve item number two, contingent upon the continued approval of the maintenance agreement. Approval of items one, three, four, and five are integral to getting the sanitary sewer and other infrastructure components completed in a timely manner this year. That includes mostly the sanitary sewer work that is needed for houses to be built out there. So any questions? So just kind of that overview of the change order. This was reviewed last Friday with Councilmember Bite as part of her portfolio in preparation for this meeting because it is a 110-page change order. So the dollar amount, which I should say, the dollar amount by time this is all said and done is an increase of $752,221.57. Remember that a large portion of that, over $500,000, is the landscaping that's already been approved via concept. So it looks like a bigger number than what it, this one looks like a bigger number than what it technically is, I guess. It's still a big number.
So after review, I, I don't vary an opinion on item two. I think there's some things that still have to be worked out there, including the completion date. I know that we talked about availability of subcontractors, but we're still pushing it pretty far out there, Jim. So we may want to revisit that. I have no issues with one, three, four, and five. And the milestone completion date for all of those stays at what, Jim? We're not moving those out to August, correct?
No, 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 no. That, that is part of a milestone for, I think it was like December, December 1, if I, let me get to the right thing here. Contract time extension, milestone. The contractors requested a time extension from the contract, a substantial completion date of September 20th to 2024, to a substantial completion date of 20, of July 31st, 2025. That's for the total. A milestone date of December 1st, 2024 was added to this change order. Milestone two includes the sanitary sewer lift station completed and operational and Rivers Edge First Edition sanitary sewer switch over complete and operational. This is for that connection on the doll property.
Which is acceptable. So that's acceptable. So I, I have, I take no exception to one, three, four, and five. And I have looked over that. Number two, we definitely have some work to do along with a final version of our maintenance agreement and looking at the extensiveness of that.
Yes.
Change order as we discussed.
Yeah.
What's needed versus what's wanted. So we will go through that. But at this point in time as a council, I have no issue with one, three, four, and five. And Jim, what is the total of one, three, four, and five? Quick math. Do I need to do the math quick?
If you can do it faster than me, you can. Oh, let's see here. There is a deduct. So one is a 222,000, 223,000. Two, we'll skip that. That was 450,000. Where you skip that one? Minco to gate is 16, 13,141 net. Hammerhead tie-in is 67,000. So 67 plus.
Plus 67.
So 300,000.
Yep, right in there.
I, I'm not opposed to any of those. The Hammerhead tie-in is a nice feature. I'm pleased with that. So, and I like what we're doing with the water main down there. And I think it makes sense to do that, given what we're dealing with in that particular area. So I have no qualms about any of those. I'll open it up for other comments.
I don't, I don't have any further comments.
I went, I went through all 110 pages.
I trust you.
I trust your view on Sarah. Thank you for doing that.
Glad to see you.
It was a, it was a very long, intensive change order to go through, but I'm pleased with it.
Oh, good.
I'll, I'll go ahead. We don't have any public hearings on this. It's just discussion and action.
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve change order three.
Basically as presented.
As presented, less.
Item two.
Pond item two.
Yep.
Okay, I got a motion. Am I gonna get a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those with favor say aye.
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 Okay. And then B is be separate?
B is separate.
Good to know.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, the item B is developer's reimbursement request number four. The project was designed by the developer's engineer out of the city forest. Developers provide invoices for construction engineering and engineer of record work and would like to be reimbursed through the special assessment district. They have provided a summary and supporting documentation. Work by the design engineer is summarized in the attachment and below. So there's city pond perimeter acquisition services of $5,240. Additional design services, which had to do with the redesign of the sewer in that area, was $72,000. And then construction services, 111, $680,45. With the total amount requested being $189,262.34. The invoices were reviewed by the city administrator myself. Typically, the city does not reimburse for any type of plating work. The total amount for this request, like I said, was $189,262. We're recommending the removal of the $5,240 for the city pond perimeter acquisition services for a total reimbursement amount of $184,022.34.
Again, excellent catch on plating services. We went through and highlighted that. We do not reimburse for plating. There are some people that will disagree with that methodology, but it's plain as day. So I'm in agreement.
You want to make a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to accept Water Sewer Storm Street Improvement District, 2022-12, Rivers Edge Second Edition, developer's reimbursement request number four, as modified per the attachment as presented.
Okay. Got a motion or I got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those with favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on to fifteen. Jimmy, you got this one as well?
I do. So Mr. Mayor, this is similar in concept as to the last one we just talked about. This is for Cup Creek Second Edition. Cup Creek Second Edition has some pond perimeter acquisition services, some design services, construction services. Total requested by the developers, ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. We, this is one where they've also requested forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents for plating work. As we just talked about, the city doesn't typically reimburse for plating. Brett and I reviewed the invoices, went through it with council member Bite last week Friday. So we're recommending a reimbursement for the work of invoices except for the plating services. So it would be a reduction of their ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, eighty cents. Reduce that by forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, sixty cents for a total request of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents.
So again, they highlighted it as city pond perimeter acquisition services, but a very large portion of that was discovered to be plating. And again, we do not pay for plating, right? So this is a pretty big difference on this particular change order. But after, some of you recall what we all went through on the ponds and having to buy different things. I feel fairly strongly that that is not a reimbursable expense. So at this time, I will follow the recommendation with these said changes. Any issues?
No.
Okay. Water Sewer Storm Street Improvement District, twenty twenty-two dash eleven, Cup Creek Second Edition, motion to accept developer's reimbursement request number four as modified as presented.
Okay, you got a motion or I got a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion, a second. All those with favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on to number sixteen. So Brett and I, Sarah.
So I wanted to preface this as Brettton's reviewing some things. As you know, several of us have been communicated with by different members in our community with some recent developments that have come in. A lot of the developments that have come in around the schools and whatnot have a higher density. And there's a time and a place for that, right? But it's not everywhere throughout our city. And it was really eye-opening to sit in a room and have a lot of people come forth and say, we just, we don't really like these small lots. And we understand there's a time and a place, but we don't want our whole city overrun by them. And I got to thinking about that because I feel that that's a really, really good point from a lot of our residents, right? They, they put us up on this council and they say, it's up to you to do what's right, to balance the city and to balance the growth. And that's easier said than done when you don't own the land. So I put some thought into this and I asked Brettton to add a line item on our agenda so that we could discuss five minutes or less each person. What your thoughts are of what is a reasonable or desirable lot size in Horace? And then take a look at some different things that we could do to drive the development in that direction. And between Brettton and I, I think we have some suggestions. But we wanted to outline this first because this is a pretty big pot, right? Some people might think a big lot is fifty feet wide. Some people think a big lot might be an acre. And so what are we really looking for here? And what's going to be palatable by some of these developers? Obviously, they've indicated that not all of them or very few of them are going to be doing acre lots. So is a quarter acre, a third of an acre, a half an acre? There's surely a blend of all of those, right? But what can we do? We recently added some different designations in our land use. And I want to open the discussion so that we can have some fruitful conversation. I want to understand what everyone's thoughts are about it. And then we want to look at what we can do as a council to start moving that direction so that we are proactively providing guidance to our developers on what we will accept, tolerate, and welcome into our community and what maybe is less desirable. And what are the benefits or the, I'll use it, incentives to build the larger lots versus not build larger lots? And I'm not saying that it has to be an incentive, but what can we do, right? What are some rules, some things that we can put into place? So I hope I've been clear in that, Brettton. I'm going to open the floor to you to kind of.
Basically, I'm just trying to take notes here of, we have, but the big thing is really like you're saying, the one acre. You're not, you're not getting a whole lot of those proposed. But everybody has a different meaning of what is a bigger lot or what is a smaller, mid, you know? I think, you know, council would probably say forty foot wide is dense for down here. And that's why the land use ordinance was updated to forty-five with that minimum lot size of forty-eight. However, is there something, you know, what I would encourage you to consider is keep flexibility. But like Sarah mentioned, how do you encourage to have those go above and beyond? Because I don't think the council wants the minimum or anybody to just come in with the minimum. So how do you encourage that? Or what do you guys see? What is that desired amount or size? And how would you encourage it?
There are ways to encourage growth, and this is a much bigger picture discussion. But I want to make sure that we collectively are all on the same page before we start entering into those discussions because those are some difficult discussions to have. Especially with some folks that have already purchased land, planning to develop. But we need to go in this direction. We, I think several different council members have made notes to me. Some people have said, we're technically a suburb. We want to look like a suburb. We don't want to look like, you know? Other people have said, we're our own town. We're our own identity. We are big lots. Why are we even entertaining these smaller lots? It's a, it's quite a balance, right? So even if you don't have an answer tonight, I would encourage you to vocalize your thoughts, five minutes or less. And let's see what we can do to start driving some things that direction.
Want me to start or?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I actually have some notes here that I have been thinking about because at the last meeting, I also mentioned that I have serious questions about what the councils had for a vision and a priority pertaining to our comp plan and our future land use codes. I think that that discussion actually goes hand in hand with what Sarah is putting on the agenda tonight. Clearly, I don't feel like we are ready for a long-term vision on certain areas of town. That is how I feel. I expressed that to you guys at the last meeting. I do feel that these, the comp plan should evolve. And Jase has also stated that typically documents like that do evolve over time. And at a certain point in time, you should be looking at them and making sure that they're up to date and that that is the future of our town, which we have not done.
So that's twenty eighteen?
Correct. That's, that's a while. So in my opinion, you know, I am thankful for the hard work that previous councils staff have put into the comp plan. But I do not feel that there are, I don't feel that it's, it's working in certain areas of town. And I share your sentiment with different lot sizes and trying to figure this out. But while we're discussing that, I do think it is imperative that we take a pause. Lucas, I don't know the legalities of this. I've talked with Jase about this. I would, I think we should have a workshop. I think we need to have a workshop. I think we need to pause on certain areas of town until we, as a council, have clear vision on what it looks like moving forward. I'm not comfortable anymore with the long-term vision that we have because frankly, I don't see it. We have, I've been digging into County Seventeen. We have multiple roundabouts that need to be put in. I don't know or hear anything about the long term when we start developing. When do those go in? Who pays for them? Are they part of a project driver? When does the road get widened? What are the metrics? Nobody talks about that. How am I supposed to just, sure, rubber stamp, you get to go and you get to go. And everybody just comes to council and we just, we don't worry. We're, we're being reactive in certain things instead of proactive, and I don't feel comfortable with it. We have a lot of infrastructure needs within this community. Case in point, you know, sparks came up. I had no idea that we were having such an issue with lift stations until that development came in. And then all of a sudden, I'm digging into it and I'm finding out that there's going to be this humongous district for a citywide infrastructure issues that we're having. I do not feel comfortable anymore just approving because somebody says, I own the land. I want to make my case and I'm going to build right now. I think that we, I heard from the last meeting that we had with a developer that they wanted to be friendly in Horace and that they wanted to be a part of our community, whatever that looks like. In my opinion, if that is true, then you would give us the time to get our ducks in a row and figure out where we're going because we got all kinds of corridor issues. That's my, that's, that's me. I would like to have workshops pertaining to what Sarah's vision is with the lot sizes, excuse me, and figure out what it is as a vision that we have going forward. Lucas, I don't know the legalities of that on putting a pause until we have workshops and figure out what exactly. There's so much going on in this town. I'm not sure where something begins and ends anymore. And I, and I know that like infrastructure is your portfolio. I totally get it. But like I am not, I'm not able to see the, the, the big picture. And then, you know, then another issue came up where I was looking at a corridor road within a new development. Well, then that road wasn't even able to be a road because can't take a left-hand turn to get to the roundabout. So there are lots of concerns that I have. And I think taking the time, talking about lot sizes, talking about where we're going is, is huge.
Do you have feedback from residents that you've talked to? About, specific to what is a preferred lot size in our town?
I don't have numbers. That's the problem. Being days, I was at the SRF booths for the downtown engagement. And I spoke with a lot of residents. They knew who I was. I had my Horace stamp tag on. We visited. And the things that people were commenting were, we're losing our small-town charm. We're losing the, the ability to feel like a small town. We don't like what we're seeing. We, we are a suburb. We should, we should be that. And we don't need to conform to all of these things that, you know, are in other bigger cities. We should be able to be a suburb of the city and, and, and be that and have the amenities that we want to have here. And the, and there's nothing against small lots. I have a very small home. I would say my lot is actually quite large compared to the newer developments.
Do you happen to know what the measurements on your lot are by chance? Could you look into it?
Jim, why don't you pull it up?
I'll look it up right now.
Pull it up because I have the smallest house on council. And I have, I'm in a development that is.
It was a head development.
It was, yeah.
It was a head development?
It was very uniquely put together. Let's just put it that way. And my lot, I feel, is huge. I have a ton of space between my, my neighbors.
So while Jim's looking that up, you hit on a lot of things there.
I did. I'm sorry, guys.
In a very short amount of time. So what we're, what we're looking to do is kind of peel back this onion. And because right now it's one great big onion and it's making us cry, right? Every time we slice into it, it can be like crying.
I personally think we need to have workshops.
Right. So, so what I want to do is I want to peel this back a little bit and make it not quite so painful so that we can tackle one thing at a time and it's reasonable and not as overwhelming as corridor studies and big roads.
But we need to look at the comp plan if we're going to discuss.
And that will come as a part of this.
Yeah, which is seventy by one fifty.
So that was.
Seventy frontage?
That was the size of my lot prior to moving to Horace.
Is that what he just said?
Seventy by one fifty. And that was approximately a third of an acre, Jim.
Yeah. Point two-five. It's actually a quarter.
Quarter of an acre.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a pretty nice size lot.
That's a nice size.
And that's, that's, if you go up into several different developments.
I don't feel like I'm on top of my neighbors. I have lots of space between. And I have a really big backyard for my kids to play in and, well, my kid, I guess. My teenagers don't play anymore.
Right. So I, I kind of wanted to just understand the general feeling. And I, I think there's different places for different sizes of lots, right? There's obviously further west of the river and you're looking at much bigger lots. You know, you've got the, the legacy developments there that are an acre plus. You get down by Jeff's neighborhood and, well, hell, how many acres are down there, Jeff? I mean, it's anywhere from, you know, three to fifteen acres, I think, depending. And we want livability in Horace, right? And we want variety. We don't want to discourage people from coming. But we, we want to maintain that really nice feeling in town, and I think that we can do better. Stephanie, I'll, I'll give you your five minutes here.
Yeah.
I'll hold up a figure.
Can I just say one thing though? And the reason why I bring up my, my concerns and how I feel like they're intertwined. These are huge costs to the city, these things that I'm talking about. Like I need to know, like I need to understand the cost implications of what exactly we're doing. And so I, I think it's beneficial to have the workshop. That's how, I just wanted to add that.
Can you describe what a workshop would look like? Like what, what does that mean?
I, I think what a workshop would entail is making sure that we have, Lucas.
We have to publicly.
We have to.
We all get together.
Yes, we have to have workshops where we're able to all meet together. It has to be known to the city. But also I need, we need to understand, like this is where Lucas and Jase come in. What are the legalities of putting a pause until we have more information? And I'm not even looking just for corridor studies. I'm looking for city information that will help me determine what exactly we need to look at.
So Mr. Mayor, without getting, because it's eight-thirty, so I don't know how much more you want to dedicate time to this topic. But we've had this conversation already on what the steps are and what needs to happen. Unfortunately, the city just went through updating its land use code. That's one of the biggest areas where you regulate all of these, these items that you're discussing. And the city spent years and a lot of money on updating it. And that document is where you dictate your lot sizes. And it's unfortunate that it wasn't done at that time.
No, it's not because the, the land use code is there. What we're talking about is what it would look like to encourage in some creative ways that we can talk about.
I think you're, you're saying that in a creative way. I think council member Berklin's looking at updating the comp plan, making changes to the land use code. Those, to me, those are the two documents that guide the design of the city the most, especially your comp plan. And your comp plan, I think, does have it where you have that higher density in the inner parts of your city.
What we can't do.
Going out.
Forgive me. What we can't do is eliminate or vacate specific portions of the land use code because then we will have a bunch of non-conforming lots, which you guys, we've talked about previously, right? So what we want to do is incentivize or bring benefit to developers that lean to specific types of growth, if you will. And I won't go into details on ideas on that because it's all brainstorming right now. But there are ways that that can be accomplished very successfully to drive different types of growth in different areas of the city. So we'll talk about that down the road. But for the purpose here, I wanted to just get an idea. A seventy by one fifty lot seems to be what a lot of people are quite comfortable with. People that I talked to had said, gosh, I drove through this neighborhood and they had plenty of room. They had twelve-foot offsets between the houses. So, so twelve and twelve is twenty-four feet. You can't reach out the window and hand your neighbor a cup of coffee. You can get a ladder truck in there. You're pretty spacious. You're pretty comfortable. You can build any size home on that lot. You can go from a smaller home, a tall home, a wider home, something that's spread out. And just kind of looking at what that looks like. But the spaciousness is what people feel like they're losing in this town, is what I'm gathering. And so I, I want to give Stephanie and Rachel an opportunity. And so I, I wanna give Stephanie and Rachel an opportunity to speak about anything maybe that we haven't spoke to.
Sure.
Today.
Yeah, and I can be, I can be quick. I'm, I'm so thankful that both of you brought these issues up. I agree completely with, with both of you. I would like to schedule some workshops. I would like to pause. I, I have concerns and we talked about them before. I also, um, have concerns about small lots. Um, I do know that we just recently redid our ordinances. Um. Uh, it was a push to get to forty-five. We wanted, we wanted wider at that time. I think, I think we need to talk about it. Um, I have concerns about regional sewer and stormwater throughout the whole city. I wanna make sure that I have a full understanding on it and the CIP, uh, the CIP. Um, I haven't seen it. I don't think it's finalized. Um, so I would be fully supportive, um, workshops, special meetings, whatever you wanna call it. To go through it before we move forward with any new development in the city.
Yeah, some things that maybe haven't been brought up. I'm trying to see here, um. I do think, and I keep hearing from residents, that just keeping Horace's integrity and character does have to do with not having so many cookie cutter houses, which could be. Um, and I don't know if it's a straight term, but like anti-monotony.
Anti-monotony?
Yeah.
We had that.
Okay. We did. We put that in the code.
Okay, um, but also. Varied housing projects is obviously super important and we already have some apartment buildings. But there has to be, I mean, I know that there's a lot of sort of missing middle concepts. And I don't feel like it's necessarily, um. I just wanna see more creativity, I guess, with the smaller lots. Like it, it can't just be rows of houses or an apartment. Or larger lots. That can't be our only options and it's not really my job to like think of what it is, but do you know what I mean? Like there are ideas out there that other places are doing. For affordable housing that doesn't look like some of ours. I mean, I just think we have to explore that because currently people are super worried about Horace losing its character and integrity.
Absolutely. And because we're all so invested here, I, I think that it matters. And I've heard from some of the, I've heard some, from some of the long-term residents here and. They don't recognize Horace anymore and, and I understand. We've, we've got some really wonderful things that have come. I mean, my kid spends all summer at the Dairy Queen, right? It's so nice to be able to go and have a meal at the headquarters. The fact that we can ride our bikes there on sidewalks is huge. I mean, the walkability. The people that I see out and about versus, you know, now versus six years ago, ten years ago, night and day difference. So I think there's some real positives, but I think that we're, we're missing something. And so the lot sizes to you, I mean, you're saying get more.
Okay, so I was using my paper as a little like fifty feet and I'm like measuring. But there's a huge difference between like Naomi's seventy-one and the forty-foot lots. There's just the hugest difference between those. There's a big difference between sixty-foot lots and forty-foot lots. I mean.
Yep.
It's real noticeable.
Okay, so I, I think that that's given us, Brett and we wanted to talk and just kind of get an idea of what people were seeing. Um, and, and talk about next steps and maybe get an understanding of what that looks like without vomiting all over the current. Effort that's been put into the, the code and, and whatnot. And I think there's ways to do that, so. Um, that's the only piece that I needed to bring up today. Jeff, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to share.
Um, the things I noticed recently is. People say they wanna be part of the community or else developers say they wanna be part of the community. Um, I'm gonna take Bean Days for example. I had three developers walk up to me and talk to me. I didn't have all the developers. I only had three. The most recent one that, uh, came and wanted to be part of Horace was not at Bean Days, to my knowledge. Um, did not donate to Bean Days. Didn't show an effort to be part of a community. And if, if we would have had that, uh, developer here, that would have been my comments. Uh, even if I would have went to planning and zoning most recently, that would have been my comments. What did you do at Bean Days? You said you wanna be part of our community. Prove it. Um, all we see currently are developers coming in, trying to ride the wave of. Growth and expansion in Horace and trying to maximize their profit at the expense of our current community. They're not trying to be part of the community. If they would, I would have known it. I mean, I, I was around.
There, and I will say, there, there are some that do. And there are some that support our kids and, and, you know, sponsor our activities and. I see them around in all the local establishments and that's amazing. And then we have some that say, oh yeah, we'll be a part of Horace. Great.
Correct.
I feel like the, the issue is too, like, you talk about creativity and. Um, there are certain areas in the nation that are very beautiful and beautifully planned. And I think that there's just, when you don't have, um. That drive, because like this is where we live, right? They, a lot of them don't live here and they don't care. But when we see the ones that do live here and they care so much. It just, it makes a world of difference in how everything looks. And I would just really like to encourage developers to be a little more thoughtful. Um, and, and treat it as your home, you know, treat, treat it as your community because. The residents are on like serious fatigue.
Well, and that's, that's actually what we talked about, construction fatigue and, and some of the fatigue that we're seeing, so. We're gonna put together a plan. It's, it's not just encouraging verbally. We're, we're gonna look at ways that we can encourage in other ways.
I'm excited to hear your ideas you said you had some.
So. Okay, forgive the sidebar, but I think that's an important discussion to have.
But I'm just telling you, I'm not letting it go. I, I need information for, for these, uh, major corridors.
Why are you looking at me like I have all the information?
Because you're the one that will tell me that I have to follow the rules.
Take us, take us to, uh, take us to Jim.
All right, fair enough.
Thank you all.
I kept mine to five minutes.
Is that really what you wrote to me?
Oh my god.
All right, moving on, uh, to the next item before I get in trouble. Uh, Jim.
All right, I'll be brief. Latest update on Colorado fourteen is October, so the rest of this month for their work.
Wait, what?
Whoa.
What did you say?
I thought it was supposed to be eight days. Now it's the rest of October.
Well, it was to October was what Tom Susi said at the MetroCog TTC meeting last Thursday. He said work will wrap up first part of October. Not saying that it's gonna be closed, not saying that, but the work will continue until October, he said. So.
That's rough.
Take that for what it is. Probably intermittent lane closures and that, but not.
Are, are they gonna start reaching out to the public better than what they are right now?
I would be surprised.
I, I would, I would have loved to have had some sort of a sign saying the road is gonna be closed. Between whatever date and whatever date so that residents were aware. There was nothing besides their Facebook page.
Yeah, it was a, it was a Facebook page, wasn't it? Cause actually it's like, it brought it up to me.
And I asked, I asked her to republish it and heard it published.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They, they did do a Facebook post and they press release because it was on the news. Um, I did talk with Kyle and Conny.
Oh, you did. What was his comment?
Uh, on Friday, giving feedback. I think it was Friday, Thursday, Friday. Um, touching base on concerns and actually bringing up the idea of signs like what you were talking about. Uh, so it has been relayed to them. Now hopefully they could, they would apply that in the future. Um, but it's been brought up.
Summer long has been, I mean, we've seen an entire development get built in this time.
Mm-hmm.
It hasn't been good.
Yeah, so I won't promise to talk to the County Highway Department since he has.
Fair enough.
All right, um, you betcha. Paving hopefully by the end of the week. Sixty-fourth paving by the end of the week. The rest of the stuff is just kind of seventy-eighth and Cub, uh, Riverside second is done with the two lanes. They got the middle one to do. And, um, otherwise punch list stuff works. Uh, Deer Creek is the next one to be started here shortly, but. The paving ones should go pretty well. I think hopefully the weather holds out. I'd say there could be some rains.
Are they going to be delayed because of fourteen?
No.
Yep.
Couldn't be. So I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. Um, first meeting of the month. We'll get into some more when you have some summaries and that, but. That's what I got for tonight.
All right, moving on. Brett, you're up.
I'll try to be quick. Also, North Dakota League of Cities Conference is Wednesday through Friday this week. Uh, last week I met with Firerow Moorhead EDC. Uh, it really was Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday. Um, they had representatives from the Ames Iowa Metro and they asked. Uh, some different individuals within the community, cities, government, et cetera. Uh, so in the group that I was part of with, with the City of Dilworth, their mayor and city administrator. Uh, Councilor, Mayor Trudeau wasn't able to make it, but I represented Horace and it was basically me with. Other representatives from some cities down there, cities. There was a mayor, a couple of administrators, council member in that group and they were just asking, you know. Just small talk or talk about what works well in our community versus theirs and just. Been trying to get ideas of how they can continue to improve their community and it was interesting to talk with like one. I talked to the council member from one of the suburbs there and the mayor from another. Uh, the council member indicated like they're going through growth. They're a bigger city than us, but they're going through growth and have a manufacturing business coming in. And they're saying it was gonna bring a couple hundred jobs. Well, now they're freaking out going, how do we? Make sure we have everything for them and trying to handle that challenge. So it was interesting just to hear their feedback or their. Their story, what they're going through, so. But it was interesting dialogue or just touch base with those folks and met with them for about an hour and a half to just talk. Um, last one I had is, uh, oh yeah. I have two items and one is, uh, last one, their second last one is meeting space. Councilmember Blanchard and I met with. Uh, DRG or Chris, Christians, Christianson Company to talk about the outfit. Uh, so we're going through basically the flooring and tile. So like you see in the room here, flooring and tile, that's what we've been talking about. And working our way up.
And we have another meeting tomorrow.
We have a meeting tomorrow. Yep. So we touching base some more with them. We're trying to keep the ball moving there. So that's good. Uh, the last item I had, and I apologize if we didn't have this on the agenda, however. Uh, North Dakota League, North Dakota League of Cities Conference, they have their annual business meeting. Uh, we are now at point of having three delegates. So, uh, we need to, the council needs to identify three delegates for the city to sit in the business meeting, so. Uh, I know Matt, Jace and I and Mayor Trudeau. Jeff, you're still going, right? Uh, would plan on being there for a majority, if not all, the conference there. Uh, the business meeting is on Friday. Uh, so if council, who would you like, who would you like to have be the delegates for? This, it could be, you know, anybody from the city elected or staff, either one, so. Looking to see if you guys have preference for delegates for that.
Don't have, I trust. I don't have preference. I don't even. Um, okay, do you need a motion or?
In the past, we typically identified through a motion who would be delegates.
Well, I'll make a motion then to nominate Mayor Trudeau, Matt Moltz and Jay Solomon. As the delegates.
He's not even here to defend himself.
I'll second.
Too bad.
All right, so, uh.
Shouldn't the city administrator be one of the delegates? What is this, what is this for?
It's just for the, the business.
It's the annual business meeting where they.
Changes the menu officers of the board.
Okay.
But they'll also talk, at times they have talked about their like legislative priorities and things like that, so.
That's good experience for Matt and Jace. I agree with that. That's good experience for them.
All right, fair enough. All right, so we have a motion to make a second.
My second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All those papers, yeah?
Aye.
Guys. Okay, what else you got, Brett?
That's it.
What day or what time are you guys driving up on Wednesday?
There, I'll have to sync up with you because there's a variety of different times when folks need to be up there, so. I know I need to be up there very early afternoon. Um, Matt is. Late Wednesday night and Jace, I believe, was looking at going Tuesday.
Nice.
Yep, so there's a variety of times. I'll sync up with you and see.
Yep.
What works, so.
All right, um, I don't have a whole lot for, uh, my update for this, uh, this particular meeting. Uh, we did have a meeting with, uh, I reached out to Fire, uh, just prior to Bean Days, uh, make sure that everything was. Um, covered for Bean Days. Uh, I think Bean Days did go very well. Uh, congratulations there, Paul.
Thank you.
My, my, my knowledge of went amazingly well. Um, there's always things we can learn, but, um, for the most part, good job. Uh, and Rachel, good job. Good job. Make sure I didn't miss anybody and then to all of our staff that volunteered time or worked during that time. Um, thank you for your help. Uh, our staff worked a lot of hours to make sure things went well. With that, uh, I can't remember if I had anything else. I was in, uh. First Carolina last week for my regular day job, so I did not get a lot of meet time as far as mayor, so. That, oh, go on, I missed bite.
I, I have a complaint about Bean Days. When I was three beers in at eleven o'clock at night, I was hungry and there were no food trucks open. So.
Two out of eight chose.
Right? I gotta eat earlier apparently. No, Bean Days was fabulous. Thank you to staff and. Uh, obviously everyone that volunteered and all of our residents that came. I saw so many wonderful people and I met people I hadn't met before. It was fun. I had a great time. Awesome job. Parade was a hit. I love directing traffic wearing an orange vest. I had a great time. It was fun to see the floats, fun to see the kids. Um, other than that, I, uh, had an opportunity to go through several hundred pages of change orders. So I didn't get to as many sites as I wanted to this weekend, but the ones that I did get to looked like they were going quite well and I don't disagree with Jim's update, so thank you, Jim. Um, really looking forward to seeing things go from substantial completion this fall to final completion. So push on those punch lists, get those going. Otherwise, that's all I've got.
Okay, Naomi?
I have nothing this time. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just also share, uh, I thought Bean Days was great. We had a tremendous turnout. Um, parade attendees, all of the events, um, and city staff worked really, really hard and I'm super proud of all the efforts. Um, I'll let you talk about it a little bit more. Yeah, I've just been working on the fit up, um, for, for the meeting space and. Attending MetroCog meetings, so that's what I've been working on, on the side.
Okay, I thought Bean Days went awesome. Awesome job, Paul and everybody. It was real fun, tons of people. Uh, I talked to them at Big Earths because I had a couple of friends who in many hours had one drink. I'm like, you're not very aggressive then, but. Um, also I think that it was, there were just so many more people than people thought and. They did say, Sam mentioned that they have a plan for next year. Don't move it because there's a plan for next year, but she said that they. Have a way to get that many people in and, um, yeah, Paul had said that food trucks are real iffy and that sure was true.
Yeah.
It sure was.
The night of the car show, they didn't, we had zero. And the car show was wonderful. It was so awesome. However, I mean, there was a little bit of. People didn't really wanna not park there, but it was, it was great.
You know, another thing on, on Friday night though, um, our local businesses really, I think, got to participate in a lot of good business. Headquarters was busy, Dairy Queen was busy. So the disappointment of the food truck showing up, maybe in some ways, um, our local businesses really, really had a good night. Um, and I think they all had a good hot day on Saturday too, so.
I think the kids would say they need more candy.
Yes.
Everybody ran out of candy.
Everybody ran out. All right, well load up for candy next year.
I, I think Bean Days was really, really fun. I would just say, I, I just to like let the residents know that. We understand there's gonna be more and more people now that we're getting larger as a community. And I think getting some more, um, things, keeping that in mind for next year, you know, so we just have more boxy houses, more. Maybe you have two different companies, you know, maybe you have different.
I know, I, yeah.
Extra of the same thing.
Zoo animals or something. That line was long.
Because the, the lines were really long and, um, but just knowing the community, I think the residents understand like. It's just a learning curve with the amount of people that are coming to the community. It just takes time, so we'll get there.
It's not going to decrease.
No, so just.
It's gotta be bigger and better every year.
Right, Paul? Paul's like, sure, smiling.
I have nothing for parks. I'll go there next week instead or not. But, um, I have nothing about that.
All right. Okay, so moving on, uh, agenda, agenda item number twenty, Luther Avenue Connection. Uh, Brett and then probably Lucas as well and Jim, so. Um, this will be.